Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting for August 17th, 2021. My name's Carrie Martnik. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. Before we get started, I have a few announcements to make. This open meeting on the Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of June 16th, 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the Planning Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows the Planning Board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the Chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to North Pole Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access to not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comments. I'd like to confirm now that persons anticipated on the agenda are remotely present and can be heard by saying the following. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Amy Peretzky?
Here.
Anthony Zaitin?
Here.
Michelle Gillespie?
Here.
Oh, good. She's on. And Millie Milton is not on yet. Stefan, I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Kathy Hubert?
Here.
Just to cover some ground rules for the meeting, for presenters and applicants listed on the agenda, the Chair will invite each speaker or applicant on the agenda by name to make a presentation to speak to the application. Participants will provide their full name and hold until their name is called. Each speaker will be asked to mute their phone or computer when not speaking and to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. Those responding will be asked to wait until the floor is yielded to them by the Chair. Speakers who wish to respond to the comments of others do so through the Chair, taking care to identify themselves. Each vote taken by the Board or Committee will be conducted by roll call vote. After members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comment as follows. By phone dial, star nine to raise your hand, and wait to be recognized by the Chair. Please note the party phone number will be visible to those during the meeting. By Zoom, click raise hand on the bottom of your screen and wait to be recognized by the Chair. The Chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the Chair has a list of public commentators, the Chair will call on each by name in a floor approximately three minutes for any comments. And that concludes the announcements for this evening. So why don't we get started? For Melanie, if you could note when Millie joins the meeting, just so that it's reflected in the minute she's able to join. She's running a little bit late. Okay, first on our agenda this evening, we have quite a few items under whole new business. So why don't we get started with getting some minutes out of the way here? Let's see. So the first batch of minutes that we have is actually ones that we looked at last time where both a couple of members had edits to the minutes. It was requested that they be combined into one document and distributed to the Board. Does anyone have any additional comments on those minutes? Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the minutes for June 15th, 2021 as amended?
Some.
Okay, I'm going to, Amy, we'll put you as a motion seconded, second. Did someone second? I'm sorry, I didn't hear if there was a.
Sorry, a second.
Okay, okay, motions we made and seconded to approve the minutes as amended for June 15th. All in favor, Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Okay, moving on, we have the July six minutes that we have not reviewed yet, so we'll move to those next. So did everyone have time to read the July six minutes?
Yep.
Okay, any amendments?
Yes.
Sorry, there's a little delay in the audio. Jim, I'm getting a little feedback. I don't know if you can hear that too. Can you see where that's coming from?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry. That's from Michelle, and I just wanted to let her know that. So I'll mute her for now, but just remember to unmute yourself if you want to talk. She is listed as an attendee because I'm unable to move her over as a panelist just because of the phone number.
Ah, okay, all right. So, oh, that helps. Now I don't hear that kind of, I don't have the feedback. Okay, great. So why don't we take a look at July six? Any amendments to the July six minutes? Oh, Amy, you're muted now.
Sorry.
Okay.
I have some small amendments, but if someone else wants to go first, that's fine too.
Okay, Melanie, if you could please note that Millie has joined the meeting in the time that she joined. Hi, Millie, I just want to confirm that we can hear you and you can hear us. But Millie looks frozen. We'll give her a minute. It actually looks like she's still just logging on. Okay, all right, Amy, what did you have? You don't, you would want to go? You want to present?
It doesn't matter. I didn't have anything for the Green Street. It starts with the Green Street discussion. I don't know if anybody had anything I didn't in that section.
I had a couple minor edits. I can pull up if you want to.
Okay.
Mine up, okay.
Sure.
Minutes up. Millie, are you with us? I'm just gonna unmute Millie. Millie, I just want to make sure you can hear us and we can hear you. Oops, it seems like a slow connection. Oops, I see Millie has audio and video. Might be having some trouble.
Yeah, I can hear you, but my connection is not good again.
Okay, all right, so let's see then. Do you want to try to call in, or do you feel okay right now with your current connection?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Not really.
A little spotty.
It's choppy.
Um, I don't know what the call-in option is.
I can give it to you, Millie, or if you have a copy, the agenda, it's on the agenda. But I can, I can read it off to you. But Jim, I'm wondering if Millie just went to, if she took her, her video out, would that help at all?
I don't believe that would. She can try, but I still believe there will be some sort of connection issue.
Okay.
Bridging the gap, yeah. Another recommendation, and I forgot to mention this last time, is if you have unlimited data on your phone, you can turn your phone into a mobile hotspot, and you can try connecting that way. But that's just a recommendation. If you have unlimited data, if you have limited data, I don't recommend doing that because it might cause overages.
Millie, do you have the, the agenda, or want me to read the phone number for you?
I do, but I'll be honest with you, I don't really know how to do a lot of this stuff.
So, so Jim, for Millie, once I give her the phone number, she then needs to punch in the webinar number, is that correct?
Yep, so yeah, there is a webinar ID and probably password as well. So the, the, once you call in, the phone will prompt you to enter everything. So yeah, just make sure you send her the entirety of the, the login and the password as well.
Okay. Millie, you ready for the phone number?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so it's one, six, four, six, eight, seven, six, nine, nine, two, three.
Okay.
And then once you call, they're, it's going to ask you for the webinar ID, which is eight, one, two, one, five, four, zero, five, one, two, nine. And then it, it's going to ask you also for the password or the passcode, which is two, nine, one, two, five, seven. Want me to repeat any of that?
It's saying that I am joining as an attendee, but will be muted.
Right, but then Jim will, will, um, will unmute you.
Yes, so I'll give you permission to talk. Yeah, I'll give permission to talk, but you will be listed as an attendee and then just have your, just have it on mute for now, so remember to unmute yourself, or else it will cause feedback with your computer. Then, sorry Kathy, if you could just, or I believe she's on now, but if you could just email, or yeah, so it's the five, one, one number.
Millie, you're the five, one, one.
Two, five, one, one.
Yes, okay.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Awesome, yep, so yeah, you're unmuted now, so I'm just going to mute you for now. Just remember to unmute yourself if you'd like to talk. I'm just going to keep you muted, so there's no feedback.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, slowly but surely, we're making it through. Okay, so everybody, I just want to make sure, so Millie, it looks like you're here, Michelle's here, you're both on phone, and the rest of the Board is on as panelists, so everybody should be here, and Kathy's still here, so. We'll get back to the minutes then. Getting to the edits, so I'm going to pull mine up. I had a couple of minor things on the Green Street section. Let's see, I'm just going to share my minutes so everyone can see. Really minor. I did, let's see. Just corrected a question mark to a period. Also, I deleted things that were in parentheses because it comes across to me as like an editorial comment that, rather than part of what was actually discussed at the meeting. So I just deleted things that are in parentheses, so that happened twice. One up here, one down here. I don't think I actually changed, I deleted that enforcement by mistake, so I must have put it back in there. One other edit I had was... Oh, there was an extra word up in here, just asking about the amount that was acceptable. There was confident or didn't make sense in there, so I took that out. This was where Kathy was talking, and this next sentence didn't, didn't identify who was speaking, so I just attributed it to Kathy. This entire section was Kathy. The other one, so we were discussing bond amounts and didn't settle in the minutes, and then all of a sudden, we had Attorney Dineski give us the motion that we would make with an amount that hadn't been discussed. So I just added that the Board had deliberated 30,000 as the bond, just to make that clear where that came from. And that's all I had for Green Street. Amy, did you have other items in this, or anyone else have other edits to Green Street?
I did not have any edits to Green Street.
Okay, anyone else, or any comments? Okay, um, did you have other edits in the interview section?
I just have a. Since you have it out, because I really only have like a couple words here and there.
Okay, did someone say something?
Yeah, it's just me about Green Street. I think it's going to be a little bit of a delay, Carrie, when you, after you do the star six, before you actually hear my voice or Millie's voice.
Oh, okay.
It's on page three. And then it's where Ms. Gillespie commented that it is not uncommon for a subdivision or common driveway that the final code should be just say is completed when the la, last lot has been fully completed. You can use the word completed twice, but I think that's grammatically better.
Okay, so Ms. Gillespie commented that it's not uncommon for a subdivision or common driveway.
That the final code is to be completed when the last lot has been fully, you could say built or finalized or whatever, or you can use the word completed twice.
Okay, so now it reads Ms. Gillespie commented that it's not uncommon for a subdivision or common driveway that the final code is to be completed when the last lot has been fully built.
Correct.
Okay, that sounds better.
Thank you. I'll go off now.
Okay, I wonder, so I can't see when you press star six, so I don't know. So you actually have to request to be unmuted? So I don't, is that true? Because I don't see that.
Yeah, so when Millie and I want to talk to you guys, we have to type in star six. You won't see it, but you'll hear our voices afterwards. There's a little bit of a delay.
Oh, okay, all right. So, so you're not waiting for me anyway. It's just a delay. You press it, and it's just a delay.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah? Okay, is it being recorded for YouTube for after? Okay, all right. All right, we're having all sorts of issues tonight. Okay, let's blame Jim. Okay, um, we're moving along here, so I had a few more edits. Let's see. Just in Tom's interview, attributing it just to him, a comment that he feels, just to attribute it to his statement. Same thing here, he thinks that, he thinks that, that's just attributing comments to him that were just generic comments. Made a correction and just some grammatical corrections here. In the section when Dario was interviewed, one component that I think members commented on as part of the deliberation, several members, is actually the mention of sidewalks and front porch entries versus the back-facing buildings. So I just wanted to include that in there because we later deliberate, and, and that was a key component that members really touched upon. And that was it for the interviews. Any, any other amendments, Amy, or anyone else from this point? Okay, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I think we're okay. You're going pretty fast when you go down them, so if we can just go slowly, I'm going to read what you do as you go along. I don't know if anyone else can see it, but yeah.
Okay, can you, you can't see it?
I can see it. I'm seeing it now. I'm just seeing the edits that you made to Tom Redd. Because that went pretty quickly, yeah.
Sure, do you want me to back up anywhere?
Uh, no, it's good now. If you just scroll down and go slow, we'll be good. Yep.
Okay. So that's that. Amy, did you have additional edits?
No, no, I was just trying to read what you were doing, but you went pretty quickly when you were scrolling down.
Oh, okay.
Okay, yep. It's all good.
All right.
I'm okay with those changes. I was reading them as you were going along. Now I can see it.
Okay, and this is Dario, if anyone has anything there.
That's good. Yep, no, that's good.
Okay, Amy, did you have anything else? You jumped in, I didn't hear.
Just a couple. Just a couple with Dario's, the second sentence, I wrote, "He helps at the high school," because it doesn't say helps. And then I crossed out the sentence where it says, "His company has done various types of work on town." Because then further down, it says that he has only done one addition in town, like a garage. So I don't know whether his company has done various types of work on town, it's supposed to probably be in, but I don't think it goes with the sentence below. I don't know if anybody agrees. I think he said he had done that one. And then on the one, two, three, four, five, six, sentence down, it says, it talks about newspapers and media around the work, but it's around the world. Do you see that one?
Oh, yep, yep.
Because I'm not looking at yours, I'm just looking at mine.
Okay.
And then the next sentence, it says, "He was selected to design their building for the Eastern District Headquarters in New Jersey." Like, I just took that out because what's, whose building, I'm not sure what building they mean, unless, unless we just want to leave it. And the next sentence, it says, "He said, 'When working with people committees, it really doesn't matter whose design it is. If it is good,' I, I crossed that opinion. If it is good, comma, you accept it." Like, to me, it didn't make sense if it is good opinion.
Yep, you're right. So going back to this one about to design their building, I thought it was a reference to the newspaper building.
Okay, all right, we can leave it. I just didn't know. I guess some of his paragraph here seemed more choppy.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. But I didn't go back and watch it. And.
I'm going to add an and there.
Yep. The next sentence where it says, "You listen to people and help guide them." And, and it says, "Help them understand what you are doing." Like, it's to understand what the town would like to see. Like, it's not what he's doing or what we're doing. You listen to people and help guide them. I was almost ending the sentence there, because "Help them understand what you are doing," I don't know. If that makes sense to anyone.
Okay, so do, and, and take this part out to guide them?
No, I like that part, "You listen to people and help guide them." And then I was gonna end it there, because "Just help them understand what you are doing." Like, I don't know, like, what you are doing, but is it what the town is doing? I don't know.
Okay.
If it makes sense to people, we can leave it.
Um, I don't, Board members, any thoughts on that?
I think you should just leave it. I think design review has a three-meeting process, and I think what he was saying was, as you go through and you look at their designs and you work on it, you, you help them understand about what they're doing, right? And that was just probably a conversation that he was having. Yeah, right, so I think what he's trying to say, you listen to people and guide them and help them understand maybe what you are doing, or maybe what they are doing.
All right, do we want to just leave it then? Amy, is that okay with you to just leave it?
That's fine to leave it. It just didn't make sense to me, what you were doing.
Okay.
Before, his favorite style of work is craftsman, I just added, "He was asked his favorite design style." Semi-colon, "His favorite style of work is craftsman." Because it seemed out of, like, some of them. Because it seemed out of, like, some of them, it was just, you know, it sounds like parts of the conversation were there.
He asked his favorite style of work. He was asked his favorite style of work and stated that it is craftsmen. Well, contextualism is a big deal. Okay, does that make better sense? He was asked of his favorite style of work, like, he was asked his favorite style of work and answered, maybe? Does that sound better?
Sure.
Okay.
Or his favorite design style, I think, into the type of work, you know, is what was his favorite design style? And then I went down to the next page, and it was the last sentence in the paragraph. And it said, "He agreed with Mr. Riordan with respect to not telling people exactly how to design their buildings versus do stuff." We need to guide them, you know? Not telling people exactly how to design their building, semi-colon, "We need to guide them."
Okay. Alright, anything else here? No. Okay, for this next section, I, what I did is I just condensed it down to do a summary of what the issue was, what we discussed, and what the result was. I thought that it was a bit much to go through four pages of it and thought it could just be summarized pretty succinctly. And, and if anybody wants a minute to read that, this is what I've compressed it to.
I'm sorry, I don't understand. Are you telling me that you're deleting four pages of minutes and, and replacing with three, three paragraphs?
Yes.
I don't have a time to review what was not included.
Okay, would you like time to do that and then we can come back to it next week?
Yeah, yep.
Alright, any other comments?
Because there's four, four pages here that you're of discussion and probably a half an hour, forty-five minutes. I don't know how it lasted. And I'm just, okay, the first time I'm seeing it.
Okay. Any other comments?
Makes sense to me, actually, because the discussion didn't seem as long as the minutes. Like, if you, our discussion on the first section was longer, but the minutes were shorter. It seemed like an awful lot of minutes in that section just to get to the end result. And then the end result wasn't even mentioned, so it makes sense to me just to cut down on it.
Okay, any other comments for that?
Summarize it.
Alright, so I'll give Michelle time to review that part. For this, let's see. Oh, I just wanted to add, as with everyone who did an informal presentation at the meeting, that I had commented that nothing we said was, should be construed as an approval or denial. So I wanted to make sure that was reflected in there. Any other edits in this section over here? I think that was.
Which section are you on?
Just the, the Ridge Road presentation.
Okay, let me just check. I think I might have like one or two little things. I'm just going to scroll through fast. Oops, I pushed the wrong button. Just scroll through mine. I just found one small thing. Let me see what page I'm on. It's the last page, page fourteen. The first paragraph. Fourth sentence down. I think it's missing a "there." She said, "Are many lots on this street?" I think it's just missing the word "there." "Are many lots on this street?"
Sorry, so you have a different page than me. So what's the, who is saying this?
Oh, um, oh, maybe I'm in the wrong one. It says, "Mr. Hutchins." Maybe I scrolled down too far. I'm under Mr. Hutchins. Were you, you're on the Ridge Road?
That's fine. There's, anyone else for Ridge Road or is that good?
I actually do have something for Ridge Road. I just scrolled too fast. There's, um, there's a paragraph where it says, it starts with Ms. Gillespie, said, "Two single families." And the end of this, it's the first sentence of one of the paragraphs that starts with Ms. Gillespie. Said, "Two single-family homes are allowed under current zoning." Do you see that sentence?
Am I in the right spot?
I have to, I have to go back and forth between your screen and mine. It's the very first, I would probably go up. It's right there, the two single families. And it says, "Mr. Amato said they tired," but it's supposed to be tried for three.
Yep.
So that, and then, let me go down. There was something else. At the very end of that paragraph, it said, "Mr. Zayin liked the idea of a public dock." And then it says, "His thought was to do away with the dock." So I think, I, I don't know, Anthony, did you like the idea of the public dock?
No, my, my point is I thought it would be troublesome, and I didn't think it was a good idea.
So I think "not" is missing. I should say, "Mr. Zayin did not like the idea of a public dock." Do you agree, Anthony?
I'd agree with that.
And thought. Okay, "Mr. Zayin did not like the idea of a public dock and thought there'd be a conflict with the neighbors in parking." Okay.
Okay, I just, yeah, I had one more little thing, I think. For some reason, I gotta make the screen smaller. Okay. Sorry. Just trying to, for some reason, my thing. My minutes went away. I'm trying to pull them back up. Oh, oh, it went way down low and I couldn't, alright, sorry about that. That's it on that section, sorry.
Okay.
My next is on Brigham Street, one.
Okay, what did you have here? I didn't have anything in.
The third paragraph, the third paragraph starts with Mr. Hutchins. The sixth sentence down is where it says, "Hutchins faces is the lack of frontage," and it says, period. She said, that's where the "there" is missing.
Okay.
That's all I have. And that's all I have for the rest of the minutes.
Oops, just to be, so for this, Michelle, I just wanted to make it clear that you were, I just wanted to attribute these statements to you so that you had stated that, and that, so you had stated these two items here. So if you want a second to read that. So it would actually be that. So you stated that you've told the board many times it's all about frontage. Ms. Gillespie also said that the board has talked several times about unintended consequences. So that was just a little choppy without knowing who said the second part. So I just attributed it to you in both cases. And then that was it for me. Any other comments or edits, amendments? Okay, so I'm going to save this as we have it now and send it back out to the board. And then we can send that for everyone to take a closer look and get back to it at our next meeting. So I'm going to save this. We'll have that. Next on our agenda, we have the minutes from August third. Does anybody have any amendments for, actually, Amy, I think you sent, did you send us a minute? Kathy might have sent.
I did, I sent, oh, oh, yeah, I sent them. I think Kathy sent them out to everybody.
Okay, so do you want me to pull those up?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, so moving on to the August third minutes. Okay, the first edit is related to, you're adding a comment here. Ms. Peretzky, thank Mr. Zayin for taking the time to attend the meetings since we had no delegate. You added a comment from you on master plan implementation. Sorry, did you want to, I'm going, I don't mean to go through these on your behalf.
No, you can just do it. You can do it.
Okay. Really, do you want to explain your Bearford Road one?
Um, well, I think it was when we were discussing Bearford Road. It was, we were discussing how it was initially approved in two thousand and eight, would have expired in two twenty, in twenty twenty. But it was extended due to COVID tolling. The permit expired July twenty eighth. And instead, instead of "they," I wrote, "Because the applicants requested," because I didn't know if "they" was "us" or "them." "Because the applicants requested to be on the agenda." And then I wrote, "The board had no second meeting planned for July."
Okay, remember the second part?
Yeah, Ms. Peretzky has questions about the special permit. And I talked about this, "The use on the decision was commercial storage. Yet the owners want to operate a contractor's yard." She sent an email to Mr. Federico and Ms. Jubert a couple of weeks ago and is still waiting for a reply. So I just, that's all I added, and they were my comments.
Okay. Any additional edits to these minutes? I had a couple of amendments as well. I'm going to just fold them into what we have here. As soon as I find them. Okay, from eight, three, I, so I actually had a similar edit, and I guess we would have to figure out a way to merge them. I'm going to stop sharing and go to mine. I also wanted to add a statement in this part that I had made about my opinion on this matter. I actually put me, that Amy, I had spoken, I added you to this one, but I see you have your own line that thanked Mr. Zayin for covering the position. That it was my, I wanted to make sure that I made a statement that is my understanding until someone else was appointed, that it was the right procedure for the current appointee to serve, that Anthony had said it was fine, it wasn't a big deal, and that Michelle was welcome to the position. So I wanted to add that to this section here. I also had I clarify.
Carrie, we should just use yours because you combined mine. We can just use yours.
Okay, I also did, I added some comments under Barefoot that I would just wanted to clarify the information that I referenced, what that was, what that actually was, that, that I had referenced about the not being able to lawfully extend a special permit. It was just kind of generically listed as information. And also, I commented on concerns with some red flags that I had noted and was concerned about. I just wanted reflected. So those are my comments. And then I also wanted to add, this was excluded, that there, about the phone call about design review and just the sentiment that, you know, hopefully, we can all move forward with a positive mindset and attitude on that after, I think, quite a bit of deliberation. So I wanted to add my comments there about the, the matter of who was appointed or not appointed to the committee. I think that was all of my edits to this. I don't know if anyone else has comments or additional edits.
I just had one quick one. Can you guys hear me?
Yep, yep.
And it's on page three. I think it's at the bottom there. It was, uh, it's page three, if you can, I don't know if you can scroll through that. Um, yeah, I just, oh, wait, is it, no, it's a different page on yours, I guess.
Okay.
Uh, oh, sorry about that. Now I don't know where it is on yours.
How does a paragraph start?
Um, Ms. Martinix said, "The board was not going to meet." Okay, so it's at the end of that paragraph. Um, it just said, at the very last sentence before the red, "Ms. Gillespie asked the chair to share her and any town council." It was a little unclear to share her information, I guess, or communication. I think that's, share her communication and any from town council. I think maybe that's what she was trying to say.
Michelle, do you remember?
And she was just trying to get communication from you to town council and from council, council to back.
Okay, so share her communication and any town council information with all board members. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was my only one. It was pretty, pretty good note taking on this.
It was a short one. Okay, anything else? So what I'll do is, Amy, is add your comments to this one and just forward it on. So we have it all merged. Does that work? Okay, is there a motion then to accept the August third minutes as amended?
I make a motion to accept the August third minutes as amended.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, Amy? Anthony?
Aye.
Michelle? Oops, can't hear you, Michelle. Millie?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye, and Michelle? Are you still with us? Okay, well, in that event, it passes by majority either way, so maybe we could reflect. Is that, is that how we do that, Kathy? I don't know what to do if we can't, Michelle.
I, I still see her, you know, on the list of attendees. But I, yeah, so I mean, you, you can certainly do it with the majority of the board present.
Okay, alright, so we'll do a four, four ayes, one abstain.
We can just note in the, in the minutes that we had lost audio with Michelle.
Okay, alright, great. So Melanie, if you could please note that. Okay, next on our agenda, we have the reconsideration of minutes from five eighteen. However, when I went back to five eighteen, what I realized is that I don't think I have the final version of five eighteen. I just know that there's an edit with the date. So Kathy, I don't know if you happen to have the five eighteen minutes, or if it makes sense to just look at what we wanted to, what I wanted to bring up for a correction.
Okay, the, just to, hold on that thought for one second. I just heard, and Jim, maybe Okay, the, just to, hold on that thought for one second. I just heard, and Jim, maybe you can help us with this. Michelle said that she's been trying to give input by hitting star six, but it's not working.
So unsure. So she was able to unmute herself and talk at some point, so I see her, she's back in now. So I'm gonna hit allow to talk. It does show her phone is muted.
Hello.
Oh, there we go.
Hello?
Oh, Melanie, I'm trying to do, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I was trying to do during that whole discussion with Millie, star six. So I didn't give any input to the meeting minutes because I was trying to do star six. And I don't know if you can have two of the attendees doing star six at the same time. So then when you ended, I start, because it's telling me to do star six and you guys could not hear what I was saying. So I could hear you all voting on the minutes, but you couldn't hear me because I was doing star six.
Okay.
And what I was going to request is to approve the minutes next meeting, because I couldn't see as you were quickly scrolling up and down all the changes that you had at the end, because there were significant changes that you had made to the minutes.
Okay, so why don't, if we want to reconsider for next time, why don't we send you, I'm gonna combine it all and send it to the board then. And then if you have any additional edits, you can take that copy and, and mark your edits on there and then we can look at them. We can reconsider them at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, great. So moving on, so for the 5:18 minutes, I wanted to, I wondered if actually the version that I, that I'd sent over from our last meeting made it into the 5:18 final final set of minutes Kathy, only because on one of the, one of my edits, I'd actually flagged that date. But it was never changed, so I wondered if maybe that didn't make it through for some reason.
So I, let me see, I just pulled up the approved minutes. Can you all see that?
Uh, no.
No? Okay, hang on. Okay, can you see that?
No.
Okay, so these are these are the minutes that you, the May 18th minutes that you approved at your last meeting. So the, what, Carrie, what I think you and I found was when I was going back and proofing the decision.
Yep.
And I, and I hate this scrolling, I'm sorry, but there, there was a, a date discrepancy that just needs to be corrected. It doesn't change the context of anything. Just trying to find that Carrie. But it was in reference to something, some information that I think Carrie, you found online.
Yes, and the date was 2021.
Right, and I think we, I think in the minutes, it might say 2020.
Yep, so maybe that's page six.
Here it is, right, right here. So that's, as far as I recall Carrie, that's the only change that had to be made was that when, when I was trying to, you know, just line up the decision with with some of the comments that were made in the decision, trying to just find a reference for some of the
Yep.
findings that, that this is where this came out was, this just, this is a reference to a 2021 air pollution control and failure to maintain records that the company was cited for by, from DEP.
Okay, and hold on, I just wanna look what you have.
So, you know, there's the whole paragraph. And I, and I was looking for something in the file that corresponded with the 2020 air pollution violation, but then you were able to clarify that Carrie, and it was a 2021 letter from DE, well, it, it, the violation was from 2021.
Could you just scroll down a teeny bit more?
Yeah.
Okay, so I see what, I see what happened. So somehow, I, there was a it's okay, I had made edits to, somehow I'd never combined edit, that's fine. I, I think that's the main heart of it all. So basically for board members, just to make sure it lines up with our decision, I wanted to reconsider the approval of the minutes for the May 10th in order to make that amendment. Just to, just so that that actually makes sense as a source for our decision. And then we would vote to accept the minutes with that amendment. Does that make sense to everybody? Why and what we're doing?
Makes sense to me.
Okay, so first, is it actually just a motion to reconsider the minutes Kathy?
Yeah, and just, and then cite the change and then we'll just submit that to the, to the town clerk's office.
Okay, so as part of the motion, make the change as well?
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, great. So is there a motion to reconsider the minutes from May 18th, 2021, in order to correct the date on page six from 2020 to 2021?
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, second.
Second.
Okay, so the motion is to reconsider the minutes to correct the, that, the 2020 date. It's been seconded. All in favor, Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Okay, so then it would seem we need to accept the minutes as amended. So just to be sure, is there a motion to accept the, now that we've amended the minutes to reflect that date change? Is there a motion to accept the May 18th, 2021 minutes as amended?
I make a motion to accept the May 18th, 2021 minutes as amended.
Okay, second.
Second.
All in favor, Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Okay, alright, so we have, next on our agenda, that's it for minutes, everybody, thank you. Next on the agenda, we have information from Kathy on 61A purchase and sale for 429 Whitney Street and 432 Whitney Street.
I will just pull up the maps that we have that I thought I had. Okay, just, hey, well, let me just explain it real quickly and then I'll, I'll go back and find my maps. So I think everyone is familiar with these two parcels. We've received the purchase and sale for each one of the parcels, 429 Whitney Street and 432 Whitney Street. 432 Whitney Street is a vacant parcel currently. And 429, which is right across the street from it, is the site of the there's a farm of sorts and landfill on that property. So as, as you're, if, if anyone is watching tonight, I'll, I'll call up the maps in just a second, but the, the two parcels are owned by the same individual, Santo Anza. He has a purchase and sale pending on both of those parcels with, with the same party. And because he's enrolled in the Chapter 61A program with the state and therefore with the town assessors, the town has the right of first refusal to purchase the property at the price that has been predetermined between the landowner and, and his private property. So the, on 429 Whitney Street, that is, again, both are zoned industrial. 429 Whitney Street is a 15.7 acre parcel and the purchase price on that is 1.8 million. And then across the street at 432 Whitney Street, the, the purchase price, excuse me, it's 23.7 acres. And the purchase price is 1.5 million. So the, both of the parcels, but the railroad and are, on one, to the, to the southern side are zoned residential B. And then to the northern side of both parcels are zoned industrial. And then that whole upper area of Whitney Street, Forbes Road, Whitney Ave., which is now Berlin Road, those are all, that's all zoned industrial and developed as industrial property. So the, so far, or ultimately, I should say, the selectmen, this process is, as we had talked about with the Ball Street property that was before you a couple of meetings ago. Ultimately, it's the Board of Selectmen that take the vote as to whether or not the town should exercise the right of first refusal to purchase the property. And so far, the, the, the boards that have weighed in are the Open Space Committee, which is an advisory board or basically serves as an advisory board to the Conservation Commission. And then the Conservation Commission, like the Planning Board and the Board of Assessors, are the three boards that receive actual notification, have to take a vote and make, make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. So the Conservation Commission voted last night to pass on both parcels. The Open Space Committee sent their recommendation to the Conservation Commission to pass on 429 Whitney and then to potentially consider 432 Whitney. And they didn't vote to recommend purchasing 432, but they voted to, to send their opinion to the Conservation Commission that, you know, there, there could be some recreational value to 432. But ultimately, the Conservation Commission voted at that meeting last night, you know, to pass on both parcels. So that's the board that's weighed in so far. And just like, you know, the, the Planning Board needs to weigh in, and I'll send your recommendations to the Board of Selectmen. So if you'd like, but, okay, I was gonna say, I'm sorry, if, if you had any questions, I, I can look for my maps. Or, or if you even need the maps up. They were included in the purchases, the both purchase and sales that everyone received.
Okay, so any board, any board member questions?
I had one. I, I mentioned to Kathy last meeting, I asked if you could ask the Board of Assessors, is there like five years back taxes that have to be paid if this is sold?
Yes, there, there is five years worth of back taxes. That, they're called rollback taxes. And just to, just to point out also, because this is public information, but both of these parcels are are, have not paid their taxes since 2014.
Yeah, and even the taxes they had were very small.
Well, it's almost $100,000.
As he was saying, he was a farm. Yeah, oh, okay. And I added.
Between the two parcels. Between the two parcels, it's almost $100,000 that's owed.
Yeah. So what happened, I mean, this isn't anything for us to discuss, but what happens if he doesn't pay, just walks away?
It, it will, it will go to land court. I believe one of them already is in land court for unpaid taxes.
Oh, wow. So can anything even be filed for as long as it's, as it's in land court?
Yes, people can proceed through basically any kind of procedure. Where it stops, where we have the, the final ability to deny something is at the building permit phase.
Okay, I, Michelle, just a question for you. If you have any additional information on what open space, what the conversation was in terms of why they wanted to consider 432. Was there anything around that of note or that you thought was interesting?
That was actually the meeting that I was, I attended. Excuse me, so I had, as we were discussing the properties, it, I think there was interest in 432 at pursuing that. And, and I said, I, I thought we should pursue it. But then, I think rightly so, Leslie Harrison brought up, well, what's the criteria? And the chair went through the criteria and it really misses a lot of, of the bullets that it needs to hit, like adjoining land or attaches to other things, or it has some obvious, you know, initial uses. I think it was kind of like, it was, would be a nice to have, but then it just, it doesn't fit into the criteria for open space. And that's why I think open, why the Open Space Committee passed on that one.
Anthony, if I could just add to that, the, I was at that same meeting that Anthony was at when, when it was first discussed. And that was, and it really was just a month's difference, I, I believe, because then we received the actual purchase and sale. So the Open Space Committee felt that they should go back and, and take another look at it. And, and I believe then that was the meeting that Michelle attended. And, and that's where, I wasn't at that meeting, and I, and I don't know, Michelle, are you on? I don't want to speak for her, but, but, but my, in talking to the staff liaison, Mia McDonald, who's our conservation agent, and she works with the Open Space Committee, at the following meeting, when they had an, an actual copy of the purchase and sale, and I guess there were some additional members that were at that meeting as opposed to, I mean, there was a quorum at the meeting that Anthony and I were at, but at the, at the next meeting, the most recent meeting, there were some additional members that weren't there at the prior month's meeting. And, and they, they felt, I guess there was a couple of members there that felt that they thought that it did meet some of the criteria, but again, not strongly enough to recommend purchasing the property, but recommending that the town consider reviewing the property or something to that effect. So again, I don't know.
What about cleanup? Oh, sorry, I was just gonna ask, like, and obviously if the town did want to purchase it, it would require the cleanup, but how do we even ensure that this property is cleaned up and you know, that's up to the seller?
432, and I just got an email, I, I'm just, I, I normally don't do this, but I know because Millie and Michelle are having problems, I've just been checking my email. And, and Michelle has, Michelle is muted and can't get unmuted. And so Jim, I don't know if that's something on my screen, it's showing that Millie is unmuted, but Michelle is muted. So can only one of them be unmuted at the, at a time?
No, I believe both of them can be unmuted at once. I think Michelle just left again and came back, so I just gave her permission to talk again. Previously, I have sent a ask unmute, but I'm not sure how that shows up on the phone. But they were both unmuted and Michelle was speaking when Millie was unmuted as well, so I don't know what is going on with that feature, but I, I believe to our extent, it's working on our end.
So Carrie, out, just to answer that question, the 429 is the one that has all of the material that's been brought in. To that, that's the, that's the, that's the site that could possibly contain contamination. 432 across the street, which is, doesn't have anything, he, he started to bring in wood chips and some wood debris, but that was a few years ago and that, and the town stopped that, was able to stop that. So 432 that, that, that we know of is pretty virgin land. That, you know, hasn't been, there, there hasn't been a use on that property. So there isn't a road into the site or, you know, other than what the owner has just kind of created by going in and driving there and, and, you know, he brings animals, there are animals over there. There are animals over there, uh, at, at times. So, that particular site is not, would not necessarily be involved in any kind of cleanup.
Okay, any other board comments or questions?
And, and again, just another email from Michelle saying that, um, that the star six isn't working. I've never called into a meeting, so I don't know really what the process is, but just to let you know that, Jim, I, I don't know why it's working for one board member, but not another.
Okay, maybe Jim, if you can try to troubleshoot that a little bit.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yeah, we can.
Okay, so Jim, I, I've been doing multiple star sixes. Now, I understand you don't want me to go to un, to un, you don't want me to mute myself. You want me to mute myself because there is background noise, but in order for me to participate in the meeting, I'm gonna have to stay on unmuted, okay?
Yep, so I think, do you also have your computer on as well?
Yes.
Um, and so are you able to hear the meeting through your phone?
I am able to hear it through the phone, yeah.
Yeah, so if you can shut the sound off on your computer, that will turn the feedback off. Um, your phone is picking up the sound coming from your computer. Um, or you can try plugging in a headset. Um, but if not, then the feedback will, um, will persist.
So, I turned off all of the speakers, and I'm just listening from the phone now. So, you shouldn't get any sound coming from my end.
Perfect, yep, then you should be all set.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Michelle, do you have any, um, questions or comments?
Yeah, I was listening in, I just wanted to just reiterate, uh, what was discussed before, 'cause I did attend the Open Space Meeting, the last one that was attended. And, um, the reason, uh, there was a, um, majority vote not to do four twenty-nine, they didn't agree with, um, sending out any memo forward to the Board of Selectmen about, um, considering to purchase it, or to, um, or even to the cl- the most concerns were the cleanup with regards to that. With regards to four thirty-two, after a lengthy discussion, 'cause it seemed to have a full board at that time, uh, they were just suggesting that, uh, because it, uh, abutted, um, as Kathy said, um, the state, state land that was already there, that there was some protection of the wetlands that were there. Um, they felt that maybe it was worthwhile for considering, and so I, I believe Kathy, you said that, um, Open Space had retaken their vote with the majority of the board voting in favor of considering the other part of land across the street, and gave some, um, examples of why, why they thought maybe there's some added value for open space at that point. And that's it.
So, um, what, what was your feeling on it?
So, my feeling as a board member, as the Open Space Board Member, was the same thing, was that, um, the majority did not want to vote, the majority did not leave in four twenty-nine. They, there was no interest in anything on four twenty-nine because of the cleanup. And they saw no value in that it should stay as industrial. But I don't think the board, the Open Space, went to the extent of actually saying the town should consider purchasing four thirty-two. Otherwise, they just said, they, they said that, and I agreed with them, that, um, that there was some open space there for consideration, that it was, if you do the checklist, that it was continuous as far as, um, abutting the state, um, land that's open, it's not town land that's there that abuts, it's state land. And that there would be some possible, um, preservation of the wetlands. But of course, if it stayed as industrial, they could always, um, add something to that as far as the Conservation Commission could add some protection there. So, that was a majority vote by the board on four thirty-two.
Okay.
But they did see that it met certain criterias for open space.
Okay, any other discussion, or Kathy, are you pulling up maps, or you don't have the maps, or?
I, uh, if you, uh, uh, no, I didn't, I didn't go back in and look for them.
Oh, that's okay, I didn't know if you were pulling something up, okay.
I have one more quick question.
Yep.
Um, Kathy, do you know if anyone talked to Alley Lane about recreation? I think in, at the very beginning, did someone mention that four thirty-two would be possible recreation, like fields, or did anyone talk to recreation about it?
Yep, recreation, um, also gets a, um, a copy of this, you know, all as part of, you know, whether it's, for people to evaluate, you know, the, the, the boards to evaluate whether it's appropriate for, you know, active recreational use or passive recreational use. And, um, I don't know if the, I haven't received anything, I mean, not that I would personally, but, I mean, we all kind of do this as a, as a group, you know, in-house. So, I haven't received anything yet from recreation as to whether or not they took a vote on it or not. I just know that Conservation.
I just know the master plan, people mentioned like turf fields on the master plan, and so I didn't know if that location would be a possibility, or if they have other just, you know, ideas. I don't know how hard it is to find good land for recreation, so I just wanted to make sure she was asked.
Oh, yeah, recreation is definitely part of the process, and, and they'll, you know, they, they will evaluate it, you know, for whatever they look for as far as criteria. You know, I don't, I have, I have no idea, um, you know, wh- whether fields can be, you know, whether the property is, I, I can't comment on that. I have no idea if it's suitable or not.
Yeah.
Okay, so, from the, from the board, what do you need ultimately, just what is our?
Well, uh, yeah, you need to make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen as to whether or not, um, you think the, you know, either parcel should be, um, purchased by the town.
Okay, any discussion on that with board members, based on what you've heard, whether we want to recommend purchase or pass?
Definitely pass on four twenty-nine.
Yeah, I do, I do agree that passing on four twenty-nine is probably a better, um, decision. But that four thirty-two might have some interesting possibilities.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I, I continue to think it would be, I would like the town to take a, you know, closer look at it. I think it's, um, it's a big, you know, it's a, it's a large kind of urgent parcel left in town. And, um, I think, you know, instead of having another distribution center, if we could, if you look at different uses, whether it was the fields or whatever, I think it'd be worth looking at.
Millie, did you have, what you, I heard you say pass on four twenty-nine, you thought four thirty-two might be interesting?
Yeah, I'm reconsidering a look at that.
Right, a- and to be clear, I'm only referring to four thirty-two and not four twenty-nine.
Okay. And Michelle, your thought, you're a pass on four twenty-nine, but you, are you also a pass on four thirty-two?
Yes, so just to make a note that they, I don't believe that the Open Space was telling the Board of Selectmen, I think they were just saying that it has potential for open space, that no one knew exactly what it was, but there was, there was, there possibly might be a small potential there. There's a lot of wetlands there.
Okay.
So.
Okay, um, so, in your, from the Planning Board perspective, from not open space, but from the Planning Board side, are you, do you think it's worth considering four thirty-two, or you think pass on four thirty-two?
I would say pass on forty thirty-two, because the best use, the best use is for industrial in there, and I think it should stay as industrial.
Okay, uh, board member thoughts on that?
I also think the town needs it for tax purposes. And so I think the best and highest use of it should stay for industrial, 'cause it meets that criteria. Again, I think when the Open Space first discussed this, they were not in favor of four thirty-two. And then we came back, when I went to the meeting, and there was some, you know, there were, sort of took a little deeper dive and said, is there possibly something? And so they were sort of saying, well, maybe, and that's what the letter was sent on to it.
Okay.
But if you're asking me from a, uh, from a Planning Board member, I think the town needs the tax revenue, and that it should be used for the best use, and the best use for whatever use they decide to have it for, should be industrial, since it's industrial land.
Okay, so I'm just gonna pull it up here for a second. All right, so it sounds like a majority of the board thinks that four twenty-nine is not worthwhile. So, this is four thirty-two? This could, this law, is this right here, Kathy, four thirty?
Yep, that's four thirty-two.
Okay, so it abuts right here. Okay, so that's just the plot.
Yeah, it's not, they're not the greatest maps, but all they have to do is point out their, their parcel. So, this abuts, um, the, like I said, the four thirty-two, um, you know, abuts the, uh, railroad and the aqueduct, as does four twenty-nine. And, um, and, uh, four thirty-two, um, then has, um, to the north, the majority of the property is, um, zoned industrial. And, um, right, right after this, um, it abuts, you, you see a tiny, um, pocket of, of our, uh, residential B, uh, you just see the R right there. Um, but everything else around that is, is industrial, um, and it's all Forbes Road, if people are familiar with Forbes Road. So, Forbes, you know, Forbes Road is, is in the industrial district, and, you know, that's all developed. Um, and then, you know, across the street from this is four twenty-five, and then, um, uh, and then the other properties, um, yeah, yeah, again, to the north, it's all industrial. To the south, it's residential.
Okay. All right, so in terms of the recommendation from the Planning Board, it does sound like on four twenty-nine, we are on the same page with that, four thirty-two, we have a few different perspectives. I mean, obviously, it's not in our, it's a final vote by the Board of Selectmen anyway. For me, I, I think four, I agree with the board, four twenty-nine. Um, four thirty-two, I wonder a little bit if there's any worth there. Um, I'm trying to parse out my opinion that, um, it's really unfortunate overall that this prop, this land has been so abused and so traumatized, you know, a neighborhood for so long, and then, um, I, I don't know, I guess the way this unfolded is just unfortunate, as a side note. So, I'm just trying to keep that out of my mind a little bit of what's the best, um, path for this area. I don't know, any final that we have, do we wanna put consider or pass, or pass on both? Amy, what's your?
I just wanted, I don't.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to make a comment, um, from, I, I agree with you, Carrie, that, you know, it's a shame what happened on four twenty-nine.
Yeah.
Um, and I just, you know, personally feel to give, um, taxpayer money to this person, uh, for four thirty-two just doesn't seem right.
Yeah.
Even, even now, at them being so far behind in their taxes as well. Um, and that, you know, if it feeds into Forbes, and it can be, you know, industrial, and it can help the tax base, I think that's, that's a better use of that. Um, like I said, from open space, it was like, they said, if possible, you know, maybe it might work, but no one knew if it could even work. And so if you know that at least by building out your industrial there, it helps your tax base, and you're not giving back the money to some individual that, um, did that to four twenty-nine, and also is delinquent on their taxes, you know, for me, that just feels like a better use.
Yeah, that's a, that's a little bit of a struggle for me as well. Um, okay, and so I guess, um, Amy, do you have a final, um, opinion on that?
Okay, I'm not hunged, okay. Um, I was just looking at it on the G I S maps to see how much water was there. Looks like there's a pretty, there's a lot of water there. But way back on the parcel, off of Whitney Street, there isn't. I'm just trying to see, so it looks like if it was industrial, the driveway in front would have to go back pretty far, and anything that was built would be way back, but it would be pretty close to some houses, but, um, I don't know, I'm just trying to look at it right now, you can ask someone else. I, I just pulled it up on the groundwater maps to see.
Okay, Anthony, any final thoughts from you?
Um, so I, yeah, in perfect world, I'd, I'd like to say we recommend it. I do think there's valid points on all sides, and, and that, there's been several people who had mentioned about the taxpayers actually paying for that property, kind of a punch in the eye. And I get that, and I get the industrial component of it too. Uh, I just, it, you know, I don't know where I sit with it.
Okay, Millie?
Well, I mean, I guess, I do feel that it is zoned industrial, so that we have some limited spaces on that. Um, hopefully, it would be a better use if we, if, if, if we don't come up with something, uh, of interest.
Okay, so are you, um, thinking pass? Or consider?
I, I, more towards pass than, than if there isn't something specific that we're looking for for Open Space.
Okay.
And I think the other consideration too, well, yeah, I suppose I would have to go to town meeting, and that money would have to be allocated. So, but then you, you might end up taking some money on a CPC too, which would, may impact something more desirable coming up. And I think there is some potential stuff coming up.
Okay, Amy, did you come back around on any decision?
Yeah, I, I would say it passed now too, 'cause I was looking at it, and and it doesn't look like it connects too much, and I guess hopefully, the Recreation Department, Army would get back, if they were interested, they'd get back to the Selectmen.
Okay. All right, so it sounds like Amy's pass, Millie's leaning pass, Michelle's pass, Anthony is?
I'm neutral.
Neutral, I'm leaning pass. So, it's, it would sound like a majority would be leaning or pass. Anthony, you're nu- in neutral, what is your, um, what are you thinking?
Um, so I, you know, after you going, sitting through Open Space Meeting and hearing the arguments, um, and the, and the debate here today, I mean, I, you know, it's, for me, it's like, boy, if we could just do, just have it, it would be great, and if it weren't all these other obstacles and, and issues. Um, but I think the logical thing is a pass.
Okay. All right, so it sounds like a majority of the board, um, is in support of passing on purchasing the property. It's a complicated case.
So, so I'm, I'm sorry, Carrie, is it a, are all, I mean, just as far as how you want me to write this memo?
Okay, do you need a motion for this?
Yeah, you need a, yes, please, you need a motion on both of them.
Okay, so we'll start with the easy one then. Um, so in terms of framing the motion, are we passing on purchasing? Our recommendation to?
Yeah, yes, you would be recommending not to purchase the parcel.
Okay, so is there a motion to recommend not purchasing the parcel at four twenty-nine Whitney Street?
So, moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, um, so I'm gonna, Anthony, I heard first, so I'm gonna say Anthony seconded, all in favor, Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Okay, um, motion for a recommendation to pass on purchasing the property on four thirty-two Whitney Street? Is there a motion for that one?
I'll make a motion that we pass on purchasing four thirty-two Whitney Street.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, um, I heard Michelle on that one, all in favor, Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Okay, is that all you need for that, Kathy?
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you.
Alright, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen. Okay, next on our agenda, we had, we talked about this briefly before, just in our, um, planning board rules and regs about updating. Um, we went through a period of just getting materials really late and sometimes when we have multiple hearings, it's really difficult for staff to, to keep up with and for us to keep up with and, um, we just really got ourselves in a jam a few times. So we talked about putting something in the rules and regs that made a requirement that, um, applicants had to submit materials a certain timeframe prior to a meeting, we talked about forty-eight hours, we talked about the Friday before. I just wanted to get back to that so we could, and Kathy, you at the time were gonna poke around and see if you, you know, happen to know of any other towns that have the, that sort of um, time window, or if you didn't have time to do it, that's okay, but just, um, any further discussion on that? Is that something the board still wants to consider?
Carrie, I have.
I would be up for that.
Go ahead, Millie.
I, I would be up for considering that, I know it's difficult sometimes to get all the paperwork in, um, in that timeframe, but it, it certainly makes it a less, uh, challenging process for us to look at things when we have more time, obviously.
Okay, Kathy, you were gonna say something?
Yes, I would, um, I haven't done any research, um, depending on where the board wants to go with this, I, I, I will certainly do that. Um, reach out to some of the other communities just to see if they do have anything in their regulations and if it works. Um, so, you know, so I can certainly do that for you, um, for the, you know, for the next meeting or, or, or second meeting in September. You know, just depending on the schedule.
Okay, so, uh, in general for timelines that we'd be happy with, are we ha, are we happy with a forty-eight hours? Are we happy with, uh, Friday before? I know some members mentioned they use the weekend to review materials. Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I would, I would say minimally that the Friday before.
Right, that's minimum, I would think like a week, because sometimes you try to get it done before the weekend. I don't know if that's too long.
Would it make sense if, if Kathy's gonna reach out to other towns to see kinda if there is any norms? Or if it's, if it exists at all?
Yeah, definitely, yeah, we don't have to decide tonight, I just wanna make sure we keep it, you know, we've been, we're a little slower right now, so it's a good time to figure that out before the next round and, you know, so we'd have to accommodate for time for staff to get by, back to the applicant. So like, for example, what, what's happened before is like Fred, I remember getting stuff super late. So Fred tried to reply at the last minute and then he was stuck trying to reply. You know, he, he might wanna, or any staff member may want time baked in for them as well. I mean, is there, should we consider that? Is there something, do you think there's a, a couple of days that staff would like as well?
Oh, yeah, I mean, if you, if you, if you want this to, um, you know, apply to, to staff as well, then, then we've, you know, we've gotta push out, you know, when you would want the material from the applicant. You know, so if you're, you know, if, if you're talking that, um, it, it would need to be, and I would need to talk to other staff too, you know, to, just to find out what their schedules are typically like, but, um, the, you know, if you wanted to have materials submitted by Friday, then, you know, staff wouldn't be looking at until Monday. Um, and then, so you'd still be getting a memo on Tuesday from the staff, the day of your meeting. So if, if that's what you want to, um, not happen, then, then we need, you know, then we would need more time for the applicant, you know, to submit it, you know, at least a week ahead of time, I would say.
Yeah.
And again, I think, you know, what Anthony just said, it's, um, you know, in, in theory and in practice, uh, two different things, so, you know, we can find out if this has worked in other communities. Um, and sort of what, you know, is there, is there a, uh, uh, kind of a sweet spot, um, that applicants will pay attention to?
Okay, and the second part of that would be, and what is the consequence if you're not on time? So, you know, in some cases, we have to open the hearing within a certain amount of time, correct?
Yes, yep, yeah, I mean, there's always a state, um, you know, a state-driven, um, you know, timeframe. But, um, but typically what we do, um, is as soon as an application, you know, we set up a schedule, um, for, for all the boards. Like, uh, you know, conservation commission has it, zoning board has it, I have one for the planning board. Um, and typically for the, for the planning board and the zoning board of appeals, it's basically you need to have, in order to have a, a hearing schedule, you need to have your application submitted to the town at, by a month in advance. So that is what gives us the time to do the proper, you know, advertising and review in-house. Is that we've got a month of head, ahead of time. But that doesn't necessarily mean, you know, that staff starts on the review the next day or even the next week. So, you know, so we need to review it and then we need to get comments back to the applicant if, you know, if it's missing out, you know, missing material or, you know, we have a set of questions that they, you know, that, that we do need, again, additional information from, or they need to provide additional calculations or, so, so at a, so at a minimum, we ask for something to be submitted a month in advance. Then the hearing gets scheduled. So say if somebody then didn't submit the, the additional material that we needed or didn't provide, um, you know, whether it was engineering or D P W or, or whoever with, with, or for stormwater, you know, that's a new regulation, um, that was adopted at town meeting. So, you know, to make sure that we have all the stormwater information or the traffic information, um, you could then, you know, you could then say, well, we're, you know, you advertised for the hearing, notice went out to all the butters. It's a little easier because, because it looks like we're probably gonna be sticking with Zoom for a while, you know, based on, on the, on COVID. So, so, you know, people don't have to leave their home and come to town hall and then see a note on the door or, you know, sit through a, a, a meeting and then realize, oh my, the hearing that I'm here for is not, uh, you know, going to be presented. So, you know, we could send out, if, if you decide that, okay, the material wasn't sent, we absolutely need it for this, but, you know, for, to open the hearing, then you can just, you, you need the applicant's consent, but you could continue the hearing to, you know, the next date.
Okay, any board member questions or comments on this one? Okay, so Amy, did you have something? Okay, um, alright, so.
I actually do have a question. Does the time to have the hearing on it start with the first submission of the application? Or with the final submission of, of a complete application?
The, the day that they submit an application, no matter how incomplete, um, the day that they submit the application and it gets date stamped in with the town clerk, that's when the clock starts.
Oh, boy, okay.
So we have all kinds of, you know, um, measures in place that, that usually work. Um, you know, we have repeat, um, you know, P, P, and this happens in all the towns, you know, there's a, there's a, there's a set of engineers that, you know, are, that people use, there's, there's, um, you know, a set of attorneys that are usually used. So I mean, it's usually the same, um, the, the applicant may be different, but, you know, there's, you know, four or five engineer, engineering companies that most applicants use. So they're, you know, they're very well aware of our in-house, um, requirements where we ask people, you know, we have what are called development review meetings, we'll schedule them as often as, as, as possible, um, as often as the applicant likes to work out what it is that they are applying for and what boards they're going to and what the timeframes are. So we do a lot of that, you know, beforehand and then we also, um, are, are required, or again, uh, re, we request, I should say, that, you know, planning board applications are reviewed by the town planner, V B A applications are reviewed by the building inspector, um, for completeness prior to them being submitted. Now, if someone chooses to miss, to, to miss that step or not do that step and, um, they bring an application to the town clerk's office, we can't prevent them from, from submitting their application. So they, so every, you know, if it, if it arrives here and they have the filing key, it gets date stamped with the town clerk's.
Okay. Okay, so then I guess the next step is really to find out what other towns are doing and figure out if that could work here and then the board will have to figure out, is that the right timeline for us? And what is the consequence if not? It sounds like we can open the hearing and then just continue it if need be. Okay, um, that was it for that item unless anyone has anything else to add there. Um, alright, great, so master plan implementation committee, just quickly, is, so it sounds like a meeting's coming up in September, Kathy?
Yes, uh, yep, meeting's been scheduled for September eighth, um, at seven o'clock and that'll be a, a Zoom meeting. So the agenda hasn't gone out yet, but, um, you know, you'll, you'll be copied obviously on the agenda for that.
Okay, any comments or questions? Alright, moving right along to the chapter three fifty-eight, the housing choice update.
Yeah, what I'd like to do on that, Carrie, is move that to the next meeting. Um, I just didn't have the time to, to get into as much, I didn't have the time to get all my questions answered, um, from the state. So, um, I sent out material to everybody, that's the information that is available right as of, you know, Friday or Thursday, whenever I sent it out, um, that's on the, the state's website. But, um, I'll, you know, again, I have, uh, you know, some questions that, that I'm going to be asking the, the Department of Housing and Community Development and, um, so I'll be able to, you know, give you a better update, uh, at the next meeting.
Okay, so with board members, is everyone, did everyone receive a copy of the materials? I think Kathy attached it to a meeting, uh, an email that had all of the materials for August seventeenth, so it looks like they're attached there. And also some links in there too. So if everyone has a chance to look at that before the next meeting and then we'll hear more about it then. Okay, great, um, I'm actually gonna skip, before we get into the bylaws discussion and just, I wanna make sure that we get a chance to talk about, um, the continued, the ongoing issues with the three thirty, three fifty planning board decision, just in terms of the conditions being enforced. Um, in addition to, I think the whole board has C C'd on emails of just continued concerns about, I just see the, um, trucks not really turning the right way or turning around in the neighborhoods or, um, you know, there are a couple of different areas where the trucks are stopping for, for sort of impromptu truck stops. So that's one item. And then the other thing was just a discussion about, um, a question that was brought up to the board about the common driveway special permit component and whether or not, um, FedEx as one of the three lots is bound to that common driveway special permit, the conditions of the special permit. So, starting with, um, the, the ongoing issues, I guess my question is, or I guess board members feel free to jump in. It seems like we've put these conditions on, which we often do. And in this case, it's a long time where they haven't been followed. So I find us struggling with now what? So what happens and, you know, what does that mean for us going forward when we put conditions on plans in the future to not have the confidence that there's the ability to enforce or, you know, any comments or thoughts on this in general?
I, I guess the question is how much enforceability does the town have? Uh, and who would be doing the enforcement, um, and the monitoring?
Well, Bob, really, Bob Federico.
Right, but that's, you know, I don't think that's really a feasible entity for someone to be, um, monitoring all of those conditions all the time for every, every business. So it's, you, you hope that when you put the conditions on you, you hope that they are adhered to? And I guess waiting until there's a problem is the only way that we can really address each one of them. It's sad.
Hmm.
Not ideal.
So Kathy, at town meeting, we had passed the, um, different levels of violation for, um, for different, invite, for different violations, like it went up in the steps, like fifty, a hundred, three hundred. So is that something that's actually happening when conditions are not followed? Or how do we, as a board, make heads or tails of the conditions we placed and what happens when they're not followed? Or what's the consequence or is there a penalty associated with it? And like, what, what happens?
Well, I, I believe what, um, it, it's called non, enforcement of non-criminal, um, uh, disposition. Um, I believe is enforcement of non-criminal disposition, violation disposition. Um, the, it, it's, it's not in the zoning section, so I'm sorry, it's not right on the, the tip of my tongue. But the, um, what, the, there has been a bylaw in place for, for years and actually it, um, that, that's also part of the, if you haven't paid your taxes, then you can't be issued a building permit. So there's many, you know, pieces to this. But the, but the ability for the building, um, inspector to issue tickets or to issue fines, basically, if there's a zoning violation. Um, what was done at town meeting was a clarification that, uh, town council, um, said needed to, you know, occur in our, in our bylaw. So whether or not, I, I know we haven't gotten the zoning back yet from the attorney general. So I'll follow up on this as to whether or not this particular, um, bylaw went to, went to the attorney general and whether that's been, you know, approved by the attorney general yet. Um, like I said, I know we haven't received our zoning approvals yet. Um, the, the ninety days, there, there's a ninety-day timeframe from when it's voted on to when the A G is, needs to send a letter to the town. Sometimes they'll ask for an extension as that's happened to us in the past. Um, so I can follow up on that. Um, and then under what circumstances the building inspector would, would issue, you know, a fine? Um, I know one of the things, I, I don't know if this particular aspect of, of, of this is going to be discussed at the next, um, uh, selectman's meeting, but I do know on, at their next meeting on August twenty-third, um, there's, I, I think the main focus of that meeting is all about the, the Bartlett Street, um, truck traffic questions. You know, the ongoing issue, um, that, that, you know, people are having or, you know, experiencing. And I know that the D P W and the engineering departments, uh, have been working on, um, you know, presentation for the selectmen. Um, so I know part of, part of what's going to be covered at that meeting is the, one of the questions that you asked Carrie or that you reiterated from those emails about the common driveway decision that was placed or, or that was applied for by three thirty and three fifty. They, they applied for the special permit for the common driveway, they were, you know, granted the special permit and, uh, FedEx at three hundred Bartlett Street was already there and they, um, so, so they are in fact, you know, sharing the, the driveway with three thirty and three fifty. So all of that information, well, all of it, the, the, the two decisions, um, and the applications have gone to town council uh, for them to review as to the applicability of those common driveway conditions, whether or not they apply to three hundred Bartlett Street also. So I don't have an answer for you tonight, that was done, you know, independently, um, for the selectman's meeting before we had done our agenda. Um, so, so the.
That's okay.
So the information is coming from town council, you know, for the, uh, selectman's meeting.
Um, okay, well, can that information come to us as well? It doesn't have to be presented here, but just come to us, uh, they are our decisions, so I'd like to just make sure.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, whatever, whatever we get from town council. But I'm just telling you that that, that, that is something that's in process right now, um, based on those email, you know, the questions from the emails from, um, the Wicksteads and I think the Callahans, I can't remember who the second email was from, but.
Okay, so that's great, I'm glad that we're, we're looking at that one because that was the second part of what I wanted to just talk to board members about, um, just, i- if that, you know, something that. i- if that, you know, something that was of concern of the board that that special permit, common driveway special permit wasn't being followed by FedEx, if it was applicable to them or not, we did, obviously we'd need to know. And then I guess regarding the fines for, for not following conditions of the three thirty, three fifty. So isn't it that when we have town meeting, our bylaws are in effect as of that, as of the day of town meeting regardless of, I know the AG does a final approval, but our bylaws are in effect that day, right?
I, I know that zoning, that's all I can speak to.
Oh, okay.
Because that's all I know for certain. But again, I, I'll, I can find that out, you know, tomorrow from the town clerk's office and, and what the status of that particular one is. But, but I do know that zoning is effective immediately. And then, but, but everyone realizes that it may or may not. There's the chance that the Attorney General's office could, you know, either amend something or, or not approve it.
Okay, but at that time, the bylaw was just to clarify, but we've always had a bylaw that supported penalties.
Correct.
But so far, no penalties have been assessed or fined to any company turning, not following the conditions.
I don't, I don't believe so. I don't believe so. We, the, the, the violations for, for other projects, I know in the past from, from other building inspectors have sometime, it's been applied sometimes, but it's, it's always been a last, well, for anything, it's always been a last resort to find somebody. It's always been, you know, our philosophy has always been to try to work it out, you know, before you actually have to ultimately find somebody. You know, we do that with the Conservation Commission too. And because they have a finding, you know, violation and a finding process. What, what often happens though, what, what towns and it's, and North Row is no different, is that, you know, people have, have refused to pay the fine in the past. And then the cost of bringing them to court far out see, exceeds the, 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 the fine, which is, is capped at three hundred dollars. But I believe that's what some of the clarification was, is how, is how often that three hundred dollars, you know, can be, you know, is it, it, can it be per day, for every day the violation goes on? Or does it have to be a new violation? So that's what I need to check on with, with, you know, I could check on that with Mr. Federico.
Okay, any comments or questions from board members?
Me, it's all pretty disappointing because.
Oh, sorry. So I, so I have two. Millie, you have a comment?
Millie, you can go.
All right, Millie, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I think it, it's okay to say you're gonna work with somebody with fines that may not involve something like safety or critical issues, but I do think that some of the issues that are more critical would be tractor-trailer traffic, transportation. And making sure that there's a clear understanding this could be and, and a, a serious problem that we are really trying to avoid.
Amy, did you have a comment?
It's more a statement. It's very concerning that, you know, we don't issue fines and then when we do, they're not paid. So it, it really makes me second guess, do you approve something with conditions? If they know the conditions mean nothing. Mine's just a statement. It's just, I just didn't know that fines were never issued and that even if there are issues, they're not paid.
Well, I, I think you have to under, understand overall and, and, you know, everything is about, you know, or, or can be about someone's perspective. And I'm not diminishing at all the concerns about Bartlett Street as that is the forefront of, of everything that multiple departments are working on. But I think you have to put in context of the years and years and years and years of decisions that this board and the zoning board of appeals have written and that people have followed the conditions. Let's go with ninety-nine point nine percent of the time that conditions are adhered to.
But in West Main Street too, there's been a lot of issues, like even when Zeca was on three forty-five and then they left, they were finding tanks that weren't even supposed to be there. So I don't know if it's just Bartlett. I know Bartlett right now. But I find there were a lot of issues back on, on West Main Street by certain applicants.
Millie, did you have a comment?
And we still have this, this old STERIS, the original STERIS. I requested the reports that we're supposed to file with the planning board and we still haven't received any of those. And that was a condition. So.
Millie, were you saying something?
Yeah, I, I just, I, I don't know how, how, how some of the, the penalties can be. I, I certainly know that businesses, you know, like restaurants get shut down for violations or things that are serious, a border health violation will shut somebody down in no time. I don't know if that a, a, you know, a serious traffic or transportation violation isn't also a problem when you say in context.
Oh, you think it's not the same?
Doing that, but, but it, you know, trying to address these problems as seriously as they are is, I think, certainly a very critical element of what, what we'd like to accomplish.
Give me another one too, another example. The Verizon cell tower that was approved, one of my very first decisions on the planning board, it ended up getting approved with all these promises for testing that was gonna be done, even bushes that were gonna be installed. And Bob even sent them a letter and they just never responded. He sent them an enforcement letter. So it seems like all over town, there's a whole bunch. Unfortunately, there are other good applicants, but there are a lot of them are just, seems like more of the bigger ones. They know, they have the big lawyers, the big money. And I'm not trying to, you know, say anything, but it hurts our town in the end, in our residents. I think maybe they need to start being fined.
In light of the meeting coming up with the selectmen covering this topic, is there anything that the planning board would want to just send as a memo or note that those are our concerns with conditions and, you know, the lack of either fines or consequence makes it difficult for us? I mean, this has an impact on us to some extent. I mean, Kathy, I hear you saying there's plenty of applicants that do the right thing and stick to their conditions for sure. There's a, there's a bunch that don't. And in the case where we're at where they don't, and we, we're struggling to figure out what's the consequence and just trying to figure out what's the path to even implement con, consequence or get it taken care of. And we keep coming up not knowing that. And is it worth, you know, send, at least sending something to the selectmen that expresses what's happening on our side and why that makes it difficult for us? Any thoughts on that? If that's something we'd wanna submit or?
I think so. I think that sounds like a good idea.
So I was just going to make a clarification. I think when I heard Kathy do, would speak about if fines are implemented to a business. Kathy indicated that some might not pay. I don't think Amy all didn't pay. So I just want to make sure that I don't think she has any data. We could ask for data if fines have been done, what have been paid and what haven't. But I don't think that she said that all fines that have been given have not been paid. So that's first, I think we don't want that to go out to the public. I do think it's a good suggestion where maybe we go to the board of selectmen and, and just ask them to help it, um, guide us. Because if we're going to make these, you know, if you're gonna ask companies to follow certain guidelines and they're not, you know, how do you, how do you move forward to make sure that happens? Is there any other process? And maybe Kathy can check with neighboring communities. You know, West Borough has a significant industrial park area, South Borough, Marlborough, Shrewsbury, Berlin. Check with all those neighboring communities and ask them, you know, what are they experiencing and how do they move forward? Just like we asked her to do with, you know, with the other thing where we asked for, you know, about their zoning bylaws.
Okay, other thoughts on that? Anthony, anything from you? Oops, can't, you already told me.
Yeah, sorry about that. I think, yeah, I, I think it'd be worthwhile. Well, I think what we need is to really see what examples do we have where conditions aren't being followed and maybe they aren't being enforced as well. But maybe it's more of a, yeah, I think a letter to the board of selectmen saying that, you know, it's difficult for us to condition applications if things aren't being enforced. Or if people, they are being enforced and, you know, they, the violators just ignore the violations. It's worth a discussion.
Carrie, if I could.
I also think that's, I just wanted to make a comment that I think it's worthwhile with Anthony said, if they're being ignored and they're being ignored regionally, then you try maybe through neighboring communities if you find out that maybe one business is sort of consistently ignores, then you try through the neighboring communities, you know, if it's regionally, that you issue complaints that way. That's why I think it's, it's always important to check with your neighboring communities as Kathy can do through the Planners Association to see if there's reoccurring issues consistently happening with certain businesses.
Okay, Kathy, you have a bit?
Yeah, I, Amy, on the, the comment that you made about the cell tower
Yes.
up, up on West Main Street, there, there definitely has been recent correspondence back and forth that I've been CC'd on between the building inspector and the, I, I, I don't know if it's AT&T, I forgot who the, who the applicant was. But as far as correcting some of the things that they have done there. So I'll get an update from Bob on that. I, I mean, if, if the board wants an update, but, but I know that I have seen correspondence about that. They're switching out the fence, they're switching out, they're adding additional plantings. I think there was some bollards maybe in the wrong position or in the wrong location. So I know that Mr. Federico has been working with them on that. And, and back to what Michelle said, it, it, you know, it, it's true. I mean, the, some of the fines that, that have been issued or some of the tickets that have been issued over the years, you know, are certainly paid by the, by the applicants. So again, it's not, it's not an all or nothing. I mean, it's never an all or nothing. But I think, you know, again, collectively, there's several departments working on, you know, the Bartlett Street issues. And, and, you know, we'll have more information on that for the, at the selectman's meeting.
Okay, so do you want me to summarize a little bit of our discussion here and draft something and share with the board that we can maybe then forward on before that meeting, just to kind of share our perspective? Does that sound?
Yeah.
Okay, and then everyone can review it and just make sure I've represented our conversation. I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, stuck in a tough spot in the future going forward. I know everyone's trying to do their job and doing the best they can and all of that, but you know, you can sense the level of frustration in all the emails that keep coming through. The neighbors are frustrated. They keep saying the same issue over and over again. I think that, you know, I know it's not gonna happen overnight, but if we can at least start to express what's happening on our side and why, what's, you know, making it difficult for us, maybe that'll help push it along as well. All right, any other comments on this?
I think you, back to the Verizon one, I'd love to just get an update because I was on the original letter, but then there were no updates and it was COVID. And so I would love to see what's transpired with Verizon. I know there are also like some safety tests and reports they're supposed to do. So it'd be great just to get feedback on what they've done. And maybe I'll send an email too about the STERIS reports to see if those have been done too, just to follow up.
Where is the Verizon location? That was before I came on.
Um, it's Carney Park Parking Lot. It's across from, um, it's, um, do you know where Carney Park Parking Lot is? It's owned by the Gallaghers, I think, I think. Um, there's a cell tower there.
Oh, okay.
In the parking lot. There was one of the first things when I was here.
Okay, then I'll take that as an action item. I want to make sure we get everything covered. Let's see here. Anything, any A and Rs, law releases or bonds?
No, not for tonight.
Okay, any subcommittee updates? Let's see, groundwater or anything?
No.
CPC?
Nothing.
Open space, we heard a lot from. Anything else you have for that, Michelle?
No, you heard everything from open space.
Okay, what am I missing?
Well, let me just go back to the CPC. Did the, uh, new application was, or the fiscal year twenty-three? You can believe we're already talking about fiscal year twenty-three. Though the application was posted last week online for people to, you know, whoever, what is going to be applying for CPC money. So the application is out and it's due November. I, I don't, I don't have the date in front of me, but it's, it's, it's online and, and I've already received several calls from people. So, so people are, people are using the webpage.
Great. Which one, which committee did I forget?
Groundwater.
Upstate again, Amy?
Design review.
Design review.
Yep.
Any updates?
Um, no, we're, we're just talking about the next meeting. Judy Barrett is ready to meet again to go through the design review guidelines, but the meeting she could do is August twenty-seventh, which is next week. And I can't meet and I really want to be there. So I hope we can find another meeting.
Amy, I'm gonna talk, I'm gonna talk to her about possibly the twenty-sixth of August, because I.
I can't do that week at all.
Oh, that whole week? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I'm hoping maybe September.
All right. And then Amy, you're gonna provide me your comments, right?
Mine on them.
On the guidelines. And then I know one of the design review committee members, Lisa Muselli, I guess is still, she hasn't provided comments yet, but I think is going to also.
Okay, have those been forwarded to Mr. Damar too?
The, well, no, and the reason I, I didn't do that is because the, the, the comments were due over two months ago. So it's like that, that part of the project is done. You know, you had, you had told me that you did have some comments, so I'm waiting for those, but it, it's not, we can't open the whole project again. We just don't have the time and, and the, and the budget to do that. So, so all of the comments, you know, I received comments from four out of the five designer review committee members, you know, that, that have been working on this. And then, you know, you, you then just said, you know, I mean, you told me the month or so ago, Amy, that you had some comments. So, you know, I figured we could just, you know, add those in as a, as a planning board member slash, you know, now new designer review committee member.
Okay. And the other applicant that wants to come in front of the board is one seventy-two Bartlett. And I know, I guess that would depend on what's going to happen with the planning board. Because if it's not extended and they go back to the drawing board, then does the site plan change? Like I hate to put the cart before the horse and have them start meeting with design review until they get their extension from the planning board. I don't know how other members feel.
Well, I think you made it clear last, at the last meeting that you aren't gonna. Well, I think you made it clear last, at the last meeting, that you aren't going to consider their extension.
So are they just back, what are they back before design review? Just their initial, they're just starting over with their plan?
Yeah.
Or like a normal process?
Well, no, they had, they, they've met with the design review committee. The new applicant, the new owner of the property has met with the design review committee once so far in July because they want to change the design of the building. They want to change the pitch of the roof. And internally, we considered that to be a significant enough change that it needed to go back through the process. So they, so the process is, is that first they need to go to the advisory board, which is the design review committee. And then they would submit, you know, at the time, what they were looking at was submitting, you know, a revised application, which would then come before the planning board. And then assuming that, you know, they would have been through the design review process. Because what we try to do is to get all the applicants to meet with the designer review committee before they file with the board. So, but, but right now, they, they're kind, they're, I, I don't, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to speak for the applicant. I mean, I, I don't know where they are in the process. I know that they've requested, that the designer review committee requested information at the July meeting. The applicant has provided it and it's been sent out to the designer review committee. And then what we need to do is, you know, they're waiting for another meeting to be scheduled so that they can come back in and present their, you know, additional information. So, so again, the process is that we want the applicant to meet with the designer review committee, you know, as many times as possible to get the design figured out. You know, and then typically, then they apply, you know, and then the clock starts. So then this applicant, you know, in particular, was then caught up in that their special permit expired July 28th. They requested an extension. But again, my, my interpretation, please tell me if I was wrong, but my interpretation was at your last meeting, was that you, you, you basically were, you know, you didn't put them on the agenda for that August 3rd meeting and you didn't put them on the agenda for this meeting. So I don't know whether you want to have them in in September to consider their extension request. You know, the questions that Carrie, that you had from the last planning board meeting, went to town council, I don't have, you know, I don't have his information back in writing. He's been on vacation, actually. But, you know, he had, he had stated that, you know, the board could retroactively, you know, consider approving the extension. So it may be, because I, I haven't heard, I haven't heard from the applicant whether they want to, whether they're still considering that they're going to get their application, you know, I mean, whether they're going to get their special permit extended or whether they're going to end up filing, you know, a new application for the same project. So I, that's kind of, that's in limbo as far as I'm concerned right now.
Okay, so my, my impression was that, Amy, they were before your board as part of the process of applying, like, starting over, like, applying a site plan and starting over.
No.
Oh, they're not? So what do they, what do they have for an application right now?
They, they, they don't have an application in before the board because the first, what we, what we have laid out in our design guidelines and in our application process is that you need to meet with the design review committee before you even consider applying for anything.
Okay, all right, so there are that step, so that's fine. So, I mean, I, my, I still stand in the same spot as last time and I don't have any additional information from town council, so I don't know if that helps or not. But that's, I, I'm not looking to add to them into the agenda for a renewal.
Okay, the confusing part I had for design, that's why I was confused, because they're coming back to make changes that were requested in July, but those were based on them filing for an extension. And so it was using the old plan. So I don't know if they're just going to take the old plan and resubmit it because I even know on the old site plan, it shows gravel, but I think Fred told them they want him to pave it. It seems like the old site plan would need to be updated. And maybe they'll just do it with a sketch, like, maybe they're just using the old site plan and then they're going to update it depending on what design review has for ideas? Is that what you're thinking, Kathy?
No, the only thing, everything has to be paved. I mean, the, again, this project has been approved. So, you know, has been previously approved by this board. They were issued a special permit and a site plan approval. So however, you know, that is all based on a certain set of plans. So those plans, now they want to change as far as the building design. And by building design, in this particular case, it's the pitch of the roof. So they need to submit plans to the, to the design review committee as they've done. So the design committee is reviewing those plans. The design review committee asked a set of questions. They provided those, that additional information. That information was then sent to the design review committee. So under that scenario, the applicant is waiting for their next meeting with the design review committee. And at the time, this was back in June and July, and they were under the understanding that, you know, they, they were operating under the 2018 decision. So what, what has since happened is, and this is what I'm calling the limbo, is, you know, their permit expired July 28th. In advance of July 28th, they asked for the board to consider an extension of that permit. So that hasn't happened yet. And at the last meeting, Carrie had asked for the information that I provided to you from town council verbally, that town council said that you as a board could act because of the COVID situation, because of the tolling of all of the deadlines, that they, that the board could consider, you know, retroactively extending their special permit. So, so that's what's, to me, in limbo because, because we then asked town council to put that in writing and he's on vacation. I mean, rightly so, right, on vacation. So, so we're waiting for that. In the meantime, what I, what I don't know is if the applicant is just abandoning that and deciding that they're just going to apply for, you know, like, just reapply for everything.
Okay, but either way, they have to go to design review.
Correct.
Okay, so it sounds like just that the next, Amy, your question is, are they coming to the next meeting? Or do they need to be at the next meeting?
No, they need to be, but the problem, I guess, in my vision from design review is it's different if they're going for an extension or a new application. Because if it's the extension, I can see using the old design and we were only talking about the building. But if they're reapplying, there are changes to the site plan that I think need to be made. There were a lot of discussions at the last meeting about, you know, where they were going to store their materials, if it's a contractor yard, whether it's in the back, whether it's in the front. There were new discussions that came up at the last design review meeting and in my mind seemed like there were changing, changes to the site plan. So if they were going to reapply totally, then I think there would be more questions at the next design review meeting. But we were kind of mostly talking about just the building because we're using the old plan.
Okay, but either way, do they have, do they have to come to design review either regardless?
Yes, yep.
So can we put them, they're on your agenda at the next meeting?
Right, we just haven't picked the next meeting yet.
We don't have a meeting date yet.
Okay. All right, so is there anything we have to solve now or?
I guess I was just trying to figure out if they were going to still try to file for the extension or if this is a whole new application.
Okay, but in either way, in either.
I guess we don't know, really, we're in limbo.
So if we're in limbo, either way, they have to go to design review.
Either way, they have to go to design review.
Okay.
It doesn't matter whether they're revising the application, if they ultimately end up revising the application or if they're filing a new application. They still have to go to design review, so.
Okay. All right, so anything else from design review, Amy?
No.
Okay, and nothing from CMRPC. I'd be interested to see if they actually cover the housing choice information. That sounds like it'd be a topic that would be interesting. I haven't heard anything, have you Kathy? Any plans to cover it? No, all right.
No, I haven't, I haven't heard anything, but, but I'm guessing that it's certainly on their to-do list.
That'd be great. Okay, so then last on our list for our last 45 minutes or so here, I wanted to just start the discussion on zoning bylaws for 2022, just to get a sense of what board members are thinking for possible. We don't have to get down in the weeds, but just like, you know, get the, the fall comes so quickly and the deadline comes so quickly. I want to give us a chance to at least put some things on the table if anybody has anything in mind that maybe we can either decide next steps or just put out there for now to get kickstarted. Any current thoughts on bylaws for 2022? I know we have some from last year that we talked about holding over.
I think I would like to revisit some of the ones that we did hold over and see if there's anything more substantial we can work on with them.
Okay, which ones, is any specific ones you had in mind?
Um, I know the one that I was interested in, which was the, any bylaws or see what other towns are doing with places like sober homes and those types of rehab facilities.
Anything else from last year we want to revisit?
Breweries.
I'll help you with that, Amy.
Okay. I think we had some pretty good ideas. I think we're pretty close last year. I don't have to go back and read the minutes and see what we're, we're waiting, you know, what our final choices were, but I think we're pretty close. There are a lot of towns that have done it. So I think there are a lot of examples.
I think we need to go and check out those examples, see how well they're working.
Right, that'd be a good field trip.
Okay, I think. So last year, I think we held those things, sober homes. Millie, do you recall why we held over? Was it Bob was doing research?
Yeah, they're really, it was kind of such a new situation to wrap our, our bylaws around that I don't think that there were anything that we could really grasp onto to say, hey, this is a good structure to work with. And we might still be in that situation. But I'd like to look and see if there's other, other towns are having, what they're doing as well to handle things appropriately.
And why do we hold the breweries?
I think on that, there was questions about whether, whether about, should we include other types of, sort of, you know, local, you know, whether it was, you know, breweries, wineries, I forgot, distilleries. Then I think there was also some questions about whether, whether we wanted manufacturing and restaurant type of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Were we thinking about which districts it belonged in? I think, was there something with the downtown area we were struggling with?
Yeah, I think also the, the, yeah, districts, depending on whether we were going to allow manufacturing, you know, would that make more sense that it would be in the industrial district as opposed to downtown? And then, you know, perhaps the way to maybe accomplish both is that, you know, you, and I haven't, I have to, I have to get my head wrapped around 2022 town meeting. It's, I have to start wrapping my head around that. But I think, you know, just, you know, some of the things that we could look at this year, if you wanted to pursue that, is that, you know, perhaps it's the sort of, maybe, you know, the restaurant type alone is just in the downtown area, but that manufacturing and restaurant would be allowed in the industrial districts or downtown neighborhood district, you know. So, yeah, so we need to look at the district.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Anything else? I think that was, those are the only ones we really held at the last minute anyway, that made it pretty far. And then we ended up holding. Any other thoughts for 2022?
Well, I would like, I still want to take another stab at signage. Certainly downtown and Route 20. But I just, I need to do a lot more research. It just, there appears to be a lot of towns around and communities have put some, you know, standards in place for front lit siding. And it does, in my opinion, looks nice. That being one. And I think the other thing is looking at being maybe more creative with our industrial zones. Maybe allowing more uses and that's outside of, you know, just distribution and manufacturing.
Actually, on that note, Anthony, I wanted to see if there is a way, and this might be not part of the discussion, but is there a way to separate those two uses in our bylaws? Because they are considerably different now than what they might have been 20 years ago. You know, warehousing has changed, distribution has changed. And I think that they may be almost looked at as being two separate, two separate types of businesses, not always lumped as warehouse or and/or distribution.
Right.
They actually are separate. There's two different, different definitions. There's one for warehouse and one for trucking and distribution. But it seems like it always just gets approved as a warehouse.
And I think.
I don't think we've ever approved a trucking and distribution.
Might be worth considering. Maybe not for this next year, but in the future, what, how to really definitively delineate those needed, if it's needed.
Yes. We can go back and look at the definitions.
Right, because.
Application comes through as warehouse distribution. And, you know, being, doing a study for warehousing and then seeing that it's actually not. If distribution is considerably different.
Yeah, so it's interesting, just looking at the definition. So they both fall under distribution and transportation uses, but they are separated by A and B and they're often lumped together. But if you look at like other industrial uses, which has A through B, we never see those lumped together, like fuel storage and contractor yard aren't interchangeable when you apply for other industrial uses or.
Right. So I was wondering if there's two. I don't know.
Kathy, do you know why? I mean, I guess it's hard to pull them apart to some extent because if you have a warehouse, theoretically, you would have to ship your goods. So is there any insight from, like, has that morphed over time? Or has it always been that way? Or we see them together so much?
I think in, in general, that they, they're, not that they're considered one and the same, but, but I mean, a distribution facility is a warehouse, but a warehouse may not be a distribution facility. You know, I mean, we have plenty of warehouses in this community, you know, that aren't distribution facilities. But yet, you know, there's certainly truck traffic, you know, 18-wheeler truck traffic with them because that's what's, you know, delivering their. because that's what's, you know, delivering their, their either raw materials or delivering their goods, taking away their goods. Um, you know, there's, you know, tire warehouses, there's, there's a warehouse that, a recent warehouse that's just all cleaning supplies, you know, and they, and they provide, um, I think to ma- mainly their biggest companies, you know, BJ's. Um, but it's not, it's not a BJ's warehouse. It's a, it's a, you know, private entity. Um, so I, so I think that has been historically, you know, not just in art, I mean, not just in Northbro, but in general, that, you know, again, to have a distribution facility, you need the warehouse, but you know, warehouse is also, um, uh, you know, a, a place where, you know, either manufacturing happens or, you know, a product is stored and then redistributed for wholesale and then redistributed for retail. Um, but I think, you know, some of the comments that, that Millie made, um, you know, and especially, I mean, it's a whole new industry of, you know, e-commerce. I mean, we've, you know, for, for years now, you know, again, I'll just, I'll use the Amazon example because everyone receives something from Amazon or, or I'd be hard-pressed to find someone, I think, any of us who, who doesn't use Amazon. So, I mean, we're, we're also used to that, you know, delivery, you know, overnight, but yet at the same time, I mean, I think across the country, it's not just unique to Northbro and it's certainly not unique to Massachusetts. But, you know, in all of the tiny journals, you know, that's, that's for the past year, that's all, that's all you've seen is, you know, things about e-commerce, you know, the good, the bad, the, you know, h- how are, how are communities, how are states reacting to it? So, and I know Central Mass is, is spending a lot of time on e-commerce. So, you know, i- it's probably, um, a whole new set of zoning definitions that communities, you know, should be looking at, um, you know, possibly adopting. And, um, it's, and, you know, that's certainly something that, that we can, can consider. And I think it, it's probably also going to be something that's going to come up in the master plan. Um, it, you know, a, a year ago, e-commerce and traffic wasn't one of the, you know, top ten highlights of the master plan. But, you know, and this is one of the things we talked about with the master plan, is that, you know, we may have this implementation chapter and we have all, you know, the master plan advisory committee spent time rating them and, and talking about short-term, long-term, you know, medium-term. And, 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 but that's go- going to change over time, you know, it's not stagnant. So, I think although the, the downtown is certainly still remains from every, all the emails and calls that I get, the downtown, I think, is still the number one project that's probably going to rise to the surface. But I think, you know, traffic and e-commerce and, and what the community does with that, I think, is, is, is going to enter into the picture sooner than later, for sure. I mean, it has entered the picture, but as far as the implementation committee and what we do as a community with it, um, you know, i- is probably a little bit more than zoning, but certainly, you know, very focused on zoning.
Um, that actually reminds me, Kathy, you brought up downtown. So, Millie, you sit on historical, right? Is that your committee?
I do. Yeah.
Okay, I'm not even a planning board delegate. I think you just sit on that as a, as a, um, member. But just if you don't mind me asking you, um, Norm had sent a message before about, you know, thinking about any sort of downtown, like protecting certain areas, or are there any areas of downtown that we could preserve, like a certain look? Or is there a small little part of it that maybe we need some sort of historical focused bylaws? And has that been brought up at committee level at all, Millie?
Yeah, actually, it's one of the things that's on our agenda, I think, again, to discuss again tomorrow, is a historic, um, district in downtown or certain areas. And it has been brought up a few times, but it, I guess it just didn't go through town meeting, it didn't pass. So, one of the questions is, why did it not pass? And, and what, what would we want to do to, um, to re- address it?
Okay. So that'd be interesting to hear, um, after that meeting, anything that comes out of that.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, one thing that might help too, when they're talking about it tomorrow, is we have a district downtown called Main Street Residential, and that is where the older buildings are. And before the duplex bylaw changed, there was something in the duplex bylaw about two families, and they were conversion-only, and then somehow it morphed. And I really think that Main Street Residential should still be conversion-only for duplexes and multifamilies because that way you're saving the historical homes versus something being ripped down and, and, and coming in as a, like a new, modern duplex. And it is, it was more than duplexes. Some of them have like four to six apartments, multifamily.
Yeah, I think it's multi-family.
Yeah.
I mean, it's.
I'm just a little concerned with the conversion footnote went away that hmm, those could be, I, I can see them being torn down for single family, but if they're torn down, I don't know how I feel about having them torn down for a duplex. You know, I don't know. I guess I'm just thinking out loud, that I know that's something that disappeared. But maybe if it was more, I'd have to look at the bylaws again. But if there's, if it still allows the multifamily apartments to happen in the homes, hopefully people would preserve them.
Um, okay, other thought, I, we also had two presentations come to the board that had bylaws that may come out of it. Um, one was obviously the one on Brigham Street. We were going to look at, um, GI, uh, the GIS map for that. I know that we don't have that information tonight, so that's okay. But, um, does the board still want information about, I think we're looking at land over one acre, I believe.
Yes, that's, that's being, um, that's being worked on, um, by the MIS GIS department, um, whi- which is one, which is one person right now. It used to be two people, so it's, but one person retired and he hasn't been replaced yet. So, so there's one person. Um, so, but, but it is being worked on. We were just talking about it today in-house. So, um, yeah, what, what the, what they're, um, what, what they're going to be doing is breaking down in the residential C district, you know, breaking down everything that's over forty thousand square feet and over a hundred feet of frontage. And so then, and we're going to take out, you know, schools and churches and, you know, a- anything that, that we know is, you know, it, it is what it is, that, you know, the use is not, you know, going to be changing, at least in our lifetime. Um, but, um, so, so looking at how many parcels, uh, you know, all of that represents.
Okay. The other one that came before us, um, as a possibility was for the overlay on Ridge Road. Did we hear anything else in terms of, I think we had left it as coming back to the board with information? Do we, did they come back to the planning department or?
Yep, they, they, uh, ca- they came, they came back to staff, I think it was last week, that we had, uh, uh, again, what we call development review meeting with them. And, um, they are, I believe they're going to be working on, you know, uh, uh, the, you know, at least an outline of a zoning bylaw for the board to consider.
Okay.
And Kathy, are they going to, they commented several times about this overlay they had created in Newburyport. Are they going to submit that to us?
Um, I asked them about the Newburyport, um, bylaw, and they, they, um, told me that the, that the Newburyport bylaw, um, wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily translate to Northbro. And then they had also mentioned a development to you that they were doing in Salisbury. And, um, so I inquired of them, I, I can still get the bylaws from those communities, but I was asking them specifically, you know, what project did you do under that bylaw? So for Newburyport, they said that it wouldn't be compatible with Northbro. Salisbury, they said that it wouldn't be compatible with Northbro. And then they are currently working, or actually not them as developers, but their engineer, I guess, is working with a different developer in Haverhill. And so they thought that that might be a good example, so I've asked them to send me whatever it is that they're doing in Haverhill and what, and what that bylaw is. And I, I think in Haverhill, they, they explained that, um, it's more all about redevelopment in Haverhill. So this particular overlay bylaw applies to, I believe they said, the, the majority of the town. Um, but, you know, I'm, I'm waiting for them to give me the information that they want to give to the board.
So I'd be interested, they talked extensively about the Newburyport one, that that's, they use that as an example to say that's why Northboro, and, uh, obviously now it sounds like they're changing their mind. But I'd, I'd just be interested, um, just as developers, to see what they did up there. Because that's the one they used in their presentation.
Yeah, and I can, um, I, I, I have it, um, I, I have it on my list, um, to, to contact, um, Newburyport and Salisbury, um, as far as what those developments were a- about.
Okay, thank you.
Um, okay, I think those are the only two that came to us for consideration. Um, I had a couple of thoughts as well. Um, any, anyone else want to jump in before I go through?
So if you want, you can go first, so.
Okay, um, Anthony, you had mentioned allowing more in the industrial zones, so I, I was thinking along those lines as well. Um, I, I have to look through it more closely, so I'm just putting it out there. But, um, I mean, I'm thinking almost open up commercial in general, and I don't know if, I obviously need to look and see what backfires out of that. But if we opened up commercial uses and industrial, um, you know, after go, you know, considering them one by one, um, I, I would love to see more, that give people more options out there than what we have. Um, so I like that a lot. I don't know if you had specific ones in mind or all commercial uses? Do you have any specific uses in mind, Anthony, or you two needed to look closely?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have anything specific, but yeah, more commercial-minded and, you know, things, when, when we talk about the breweries and different things that we could do there. Um, I don't know, even, maybe it's nursing homes or something like that, I don't know.
Put them next to the trucks. All right, um, okay, also, um, I have a couple of ones that may not go over well, but I'm going to throw it out there anyway because, um, it's been on my mind a little bit and I at least want to put up for board consideration. One is considering a moratorium for warehouses and trucking and distribution until we get a better grasp of what's going on in town and what the impact is and what we can do for, you know, uh, you know, as we get our heads around what's going on in town and the region, get their heads around it, um, do we want to put some sort of moratorium in place on that use? Um, until we have a solution that works for everybody. Um, I, I mean, I, I, I don't know how well that'll go over. Are any initial thoughts on that or? It's okay, no one has.
I think that's a double-edged sword, but yeah.
Say it again, Millie?
I, I think that can be a double-edged sword, but I think it might be worth looking into just to see what we can be better prepared for.
Yeah, and maybe it comes down to your original point, Millie, which is be- better delineating them or defining them or getting back to Kathy's point about the e-commerce thing. Maybe there's other tools that helps us accomplish that. I know we talk about like, what's the problem you're trying to solve for? So maybe once we really identified a problem, there are other tools that help solve it uh, that aren't a moratorium, but it's just something I wanted to put out there, um, just to say the words. And, um, the other one that I don't know how well it'll go over. Yeah, go ahead.
It, it does look like Michelle has her hand up. I don't know about.
Oh, sorry, I can't see if you do, Michelle. I don't see any hand. Michelle, do you have a comment?
Uh, no.
Oh, no.
Okay.
Okay.
I just saw a hand on the screen. It looks like, unless that's mine. Is anybody else?
Am I too far?
Okay, just feel free to jump in, Michelle, if you, um, if you're raising hand and I don't see it. I don't see any hands raised actually at all from, from the panel, so, um, let's see. Oh, the other one that I don't think, that I'm not sure will go over well, but I'm going to put it out there anyway, is, um, really taking a closer look at use variances and whether or not, and I think this is obviously a discussion we'd want to start early with the ZBA because we've talked about it in the past. And, you know, I think it's worth maybe at least bringing up. And if the planning board is interested in it, then also discussing with the ZBA as well, is it impacts them? But, um, I continue to wonder if use variances hurt us, and a lot of towns are getting, are not using them anymore. It's a little bit, my understanding is that they're antiquated more, there are fewer towns using them. So I just wanted to take a look at whether or not use variances still make sense for our town. Um, and maybe they do, maybe they don't, but just throwing that out there as well. Any thoughts on that or either?
Well, I think that trucking and warehousing more moratorium is important because if you think of the surrounding towns around us, people are just starting to get Amazon. We have Amazon, FedEx, A D P I L. Like, at what point do you say Northboro has enough? You know, I think, are we the only town with three trucking distribution centers? Like, with the storage facilities, at one point, the town said, okay, we have enough. So now we're going to prohibit them, but maybe that will be all part of the discussion with the warehouses and the trucking and. But I also agree about opening up the industrial.
Is that you, Michelle?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think it goes back, Amy, to what Carrie was saying. It's more of looking at the bigger picture than just saying distribution and warehouses because as Kathy was saying as well, e-commerce has just matured to a level. So maybe some of, for example, you look at them as product centers, right? So you, I mean, with the enough data that they know, they may need to have companies that have to house a certain amount of product because they know they're going to be distributed within the next twelve months. So they just have product centers. That may not, that's not a bad use for that area. You know, where you come in and you probably store different products that they know that the people within the surrounding community is going to use. So I think it's going to take a little higher level of thinking about what does the distribution center in a warehouse actually mean? And, and are they branching out to certain other things that are now called product centers where items are stored? So I think it's a little bit more complicated than just saying we have three warehouses. I think we might be missing an opportunity to have product centers there that could actually bring in good revenue, but you're not going to have the same amount of volume of traffic.
Okay, but if it gets difficult, then maybe the moratorium's a good idea to go through it all and see what is good and what isn't. And, but I also wanted to follow up on the industrial commercial. I agree, whether we open up industrial to all of commercial uses or just put an overlay. Hey, I thought that for years, I think we've been talking about it. And there are a lot of commercial uses that bring in just as much revenue as the warehouses, so. And one thing I wanted to talk about was the groundwater committee. I think the groundwater committee has changed over time, but I also think when you look back to our last, one of our last applications, and I was on the groundwater committee, and I think it's great, but what the groundwater committee does is they get a memo from Fred. And Fred goes through the bylaw and he checks off what's been covered and what hasn't been covered. And the bylaw committee, uh, the groundwater committee just kind of says, okay, you didn't meet this issue in Fred's memo, so can you come back with that information? But I don't think it's anything that the planning board or the ZBA is a special permit granting authorities couldn't do. I looked around the state, there really aren't any other towns that have a groundwater committee as a middleman. And one of the things that we're supposed to do as a special permit granting authority is look at the simplicity, reliability, and the feasibility of the control measures proposed. And when I was on the groundwater committee, the groundwater committee voted not to read any of the operation and maintenance manuals or the stormwater reports. So even though they're saying everything, hey, let's send it to the planning board, they're not looking for simplicity, reliability, or feasibility because now they've said, we're not going to read those, they're too big, they're too long, too much paperwork. We'll let Fred use, read it. And also for the impervious numbers, we're not going to do those calculations, that will be Fred. So it's pretty much a memo from Fred, and there aren't a whole lot of questions. I really think that the planning board being the special permit granting authority, or the ZBA is actually for the, also, for the groundwater, it should just go straight to them, because what's happening is the groundwater is just reading Fred's memo, and they're saying, okay, we'll approve that, and we recommend approval, but they're not really, we're not really doing any deeper research than looking into Fred's memo, and then Fred's memo comes to the planning board. So even on our decision, it's like, the groundwater, um, the groundwater committee approved it, and then the town engineer approved it, but really, it's the same memo, but now it skips in the box. And, and it just, if, if the groundwater committee isn't really reviewing this stormwater maintenance manuals or the operations manuals, then then how, you know, they're actually looking into, like what I said, the simplicity, reliability, and I think it would just be better just going right straight to the special permit granting authority. There's only one town that I found that had a groundwater committee, I think Sherburne, and what they really did is they didn't do what our groundwater committee does. They were, one of the applications they were looking at was at, um, it was a turf field. So what they would do is they would research the rubber crumb from the turf fields, and they did a ton of research, and they sent a report to their planning board saying, I think this turf field product is safe for the groundwater, or I feel it's not safe for the groundwater. Where our groundwater committee really doesn't delve into that much detail. So, I just, at this point, with the groundwater committee, it seems like it's overruled board, and that's not really what it was meant to do.
I thought their comments, oh, is that, you have additional?
And said, well, the. And stuff like that, but they're really not delving that deep into the products. And I did look through the bylaw, it's really not that hard to do, it's, it's taking out a couple lines.
Okay, any thoughts or comments?
So, Amy, are you asking that the groundwater committee actually do more, or that it become really part of the planning board's site plan approval process?
Well, when I first looked at it, I think it just sort of dissolved, and then it just goes to the special permit granting authority, because one of the main things we looked at is if there are chemi- we made sure there was a container, a big enough cabinet to store the chemicals. But as a planning board, we could do that, it's not, so I was saying that we just dissolve the middleman, and it just goes straight to the special permit granting authority, like m- most other towns in Massachusetts.
And, and so then?
I looked at like our surrounding towns and.
But, but then you're saying that those reports are.
They come to us.
And, right, but I guess what I'm.
If we want, we're, we're the. If we're the special permit granting authority, then we should be the ones reading it and, and approving it. And say, if we are hiring a peer reviewer, or Fred or Kathy, ask the questions to them. But if the groundwater committee is reading them, then how can they send the information to us that they approved them?
So Millie, I didn't hear your question, could you repeat your question?
I just, I'm concerned that putting that on another board, I mean, that's, that's a lot of information for them to be reading. Um, the stormwater reports and the hydro geological surveys and all that stuff, that's a lot of, that's a lot of writing.
Well, I guess, I think the point is that it's not being done at all right now, so how do we, how do we fix that?
Why don't you send a note to the groundwater committee and ask them, give them your input, and ask them for recommendations or feedback?
I was on the board when they voted, voted that they didn't wanna read them, they said it was, they were too long, and it was too much paper, and nobody was reading them anyways, so they asked Fred to stop sending them.
Why don't you just, why don't you just start it, a letter to the groundwater, saying we have some concerns? Could you explain to us why you made this decision?
I was there when they did it, so I, I heard why they did it.
But Amy, this is the first time you're even discussing this with the board, that, that you have concerns that they're not reviewing these documents. So you're asking the planning board now, and the planning board.
I guess my, my concern is.
That, uh, I'm just recommending that the planning board could send a letter to the chair saying, we understand that you, as procedurally, you don't review these documents. Could you explain your decision, and, uh, can we have some sort of dialogue about it?
I don't know if it would change. I could, I mean, we had the discussion about it already, uh, like a year ago, and it's the same board members. And when I actually started on the groundwater committee, I asked somebody who was leaving the groundwater committee, and they were an outside resident, and I said, oh, you know, how was the groundwater committee, I'm joining the groundwater committee, and she goes, oh, you know, we don't, we just do what Fred, you know, we just follow Fred's lead, so. I- if they're just following Fred's lead, I just think that the planning board can follow Fred's lead, because we're the ones who approve the special permits. And so the middleman is actually taking the authority away from the special permit granting authority, because it's being used by applicants, it's being discussed in the courts when they, things get appealed. I just, it just is concern to me.
Okay, well, we don't have to solve.
It's just, I mean, we don't have to talk about it tonight, we can just.
All right, so on the.
I was just throwing it out there.
That's okay, I think it's good to put everything out there, and then we don't, we're not solving it tonight, deciding tonight. Are there any other thoughts on bylaws? And I'm gonna just quickly recap what I wrote down. So I have, um, revisiting, from, a couple from last year, one being the sober homes slash rehab facilities, the breweries, getting back to both of those. Um, the, let's see, looking at, I wrote a lot of notes on the breweries. Okay, um, signs downtown Route twenty, um, allowing for more in the industrial zone. We said that a couple different ways, but I'll just boil it down to that. Um, just looking at the definitions again for what's under trucking and distribution, um, if there's a need to review the definitions, to consider new definitions, just modernize them maybe to encompass, encompass that e-commerce component, um, Michelle brought up the product centers, and is a good example for that. Um, I have possible historical district, um, just looking at anything there that we would wanna support, um, as that unfolds from the committee, if there's anything additional there. Um, I have, oh, I don't know if this is meant as a bylaw or a comment, or part of the historical thing, but the, the conversions only in downtown, Amy, did you just mean that as a point about something in the historical district we could do? Or was that an additional proposal?
Um, it might be a proposal, maybe bring back conversion only in that Main Street residential.
Okay, that's okay, we don't have to solve, I just wanna, then we have, um, the possible bylaw related to, I think, was it a lot change, square footage change? It wasn't, was it a frontage change on eighty-one Brigham, or a lot size change, or both?
Well, I can take a stab at that, um, we're not really sure what, what he's looking for. Um, but, but the, so I guess the overall question was, was, you know, he, the, that particular resident brought up that, you know, he has, he doesn't have enough frontage, but he has more than enough area. So is there some sort of, um, bylaw that could address that, that you could maybe have reduced frontage? I, I, actually, I'm not sure, I'm not, so, but, but, you know, once we get the research, we can see how many lots this might affect.
Okay, um, I have possibly the overlay for, um, that, I guess we're getting a proposal for, um, and Michelle asked to see the Newburyport one as well, if they could share that, is that possible to get?
Yeah, I can, I can get those.
Okay, um, the, um, the trucking, possible trucking warehouse moratorium, um, possible, looking again at use variances, and then, um, looking at the groundwater committee. Did I miss anything?
No, but could we, Carrie, just go back to, uh, Ridge Road, where he agreed actually to put in a subdivision plan, or at least show a subdivision plan on why it couldn't be a subdivision?
Yes, do we, so did that come through, Kathy, or no?
Well, that, I mean, again, we don't have anything from that, from that applicant. Um, what I suggested was that, what, whatever does come through, that part of that bylaw should be that you end up with, you, I mean, you require, again, what, what's often referred to as a yield plan, Y I E L D, um, which is basically, you know, a preliminary subdivision plan, which shows you what could be done under current zoning, and then what, what the, what you could do under the, the overlay district. So I'm just, uh, so my suggestion is, is that, you know, and, and as in most overlay districts, including two that we have in our bylaw, uh, you know, existing bylaw, you know, you require that, that, you know, base plan to show you what could be done under current zoning.
Okay. So that, i- if we were outside of this, so I guess, Michelle, were you asking because we're getting this overlay proposal, but we've never seen a subdivision proposal, is that what you're getting at?
Yeah, so that was a question that I had asked him, was, can you show us the preliminary subdivision plan? And I, he indicated that he would, so I think somewhere along the line would be, you know, whether or not he, we should set the expectation that he should be submitting that.
Right, because otherwise, we're not gonna pursue, uh, we're not gonna look at the overlay without understanding why a subdivision wouldn't work.
Exactly.
Okay, all right, anything else on bylaws? Sounds pretty easy, it's an easy list this year. Okay, so, um, I don't think, I must, anyone? Oh, say it again?
Oh, if you can hear me, I just had one more thing, and, um, I was gonna add it quickly, is, I have to think of it, oh, the dark skies, I've talked about it before, and, and we've talked about it. And, um, I have noticed in other towns, they actually have dark skies as part of their bylaws. And that's just, it's really just a color of a light bulb. And it's just, so it doesn't affect neighbors and birds and animals, and dark sky seems like a new way of doing lighting, and most applicants do it anyways. But I did notice that some towns just have in their bylaws that you have to be dark sky compliant. So yes, if we could get some information on, I might even have some on dark sky compliance, and whether or not it needs to be in the bylaws or, or not. But I, I don't think it's a, a really big deal, but I could be wrong.
Okay. One wild card is Master Plan Implementation Committee is starting to meet in September. So, Amy, you're our representative. Uh, how likely is it, I guess, now that if we're only, if we're just meet, if they're just meeting now, do we need to account for possible zoning bylaws coming out of that committee? Or maybe Kathy, this is a question for you, do you think we should consider possible things coming out of Master Plan, or probably not for this year?
I, in, in my opinion, no, I don't think for this year, um, because, you know, that we're gonna spend, um, well, wh- what, what I've contracted with the master plan consultant for is, is for five meetings to get the committee up and running. So, um, I'm not saying that it's going to take five meetings, but it certainly not gonna take one or two meetings. So, um, so I, I would tend to think that, um, is, is what they spend their first year on is, is, you know, figuring out what, what the, you know, top, say, three priorities are, um, that they wanna implement. And then, you know, that, and then, obviously, that gets dispersed to the various departments as to who's going to do what. So then I think that, that the zoning is probably, you know, the second year. Um, but, you know, and again, I'm thinking of, of downtown in particular, but.
Okay. Okay, anything else for bylaws? Okay, um, just before we close here, we, I just wanna make sure, I, I will allow if there are any public comments, if anyone has any comments on bylaws or anything else, just to account for comments from the public. Okay, no comments, so that is that, um, our next planning board meeting is September seventh, and next ZBA is not until the twenty-fourth, oh, so no ZBA this month. Okay.
Yes, correct, we, we just had one application, and the board voted to move it to their September meeting.
Okay. All right, so with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Have a good night, thanks, everybody, meeting adjourned.
Thank you, good night.